Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to call, no one will need the latest from county commissioners to order. This is an station instruction, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone. I'd like to invite this man with that's on. Deputy County Minister to come up and give us our safety instructions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, please listen to the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where your exits are. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, I ask that everyone exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two exterior doors, one to your right, to your right. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross Bramble Street to our parking lot to be safely away from the building. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance. In the case of a tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room into the hallway where we will all remain until it is safe to exit. In the event of an active shooter, we ask that you run if there is an accessible escape path and try to evacuate the premises. Hide if you can't evacuate and find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found and lock any doors that you can. And finally, as a last resort, fight and only if your life is in imminent danger. Our staff will continue to provide additional direction and assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
You're talking about a following, we give thanks for this day. We thank you for your life that you've given us. We ask that you bless us to be sensible to the needs of our community. Help us to make the right decisions and make our county a better place in which to live. Through Christ our Lord, we do pray. You have any real agenda for the minutes for the previous meeting? There's no addition to our correct. Their most. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes on aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And um. Next to come to either. The public hand is called to order, ready to defend your block grant, and to revise the application. The public hearing is called to order. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public comments?
Yes. On November sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. in the Jonathan Park Commission for an Isham County Administrative Building. The Isham County Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing to receive comments on proposed application for C D B G and all funding for housing improvement within Isham County. The county intends to request nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to rehabilitate slash reconstruct under occupied roads to moderate income homes. The public is invited to provide comments. The county will respond to all written comments within ten count of days, encourage its comments, and will make the effect efforts to involve historically underutilized businesses in section three individuals and businesses in execution of the program. Persons with disabilities or that are otherwise need assistance should contact the person listed below at least one day in advance of the hearing. A combination will be made for all who request assistance with participating in the public hearing. If this information is available in Spanish or any other language upon request. Please contact the individual listed below to accommodate this request.
Mr. Chairman's comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have a representative here tonight from McDavid and Associates who's working with Ms. Braswell and I and their team on preparing this application. So I asked him to come forward. He's going to give an overview of the application we're going to submit. And while he's coming, I'll let you know that there will be two actions we'll ask that you take tonight. First being to approve a citizens' participation plan, which a copy of that is after place. Uh, you've seen this before. It talks about the ways that we will inform our citizens about this program, which includes the public hearing we're having tonight. Um, also, pending any public comment and your questions, I ask that you will, uh, in separate action adopt the resolution that's presented as well. That will authorize us to, uh, submit this application.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Adrian Mandigo. I work with McDavid Associates. Like they said, the Edgerton County will be applying for a nine hundred, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. They'll be aimed to assist all my homeowners. That's gonna, the Housing Committee was, uh, was collected together and met and ranked the eligible applicants. The beneficiaries that were, that were selected was from a total of a hundred and thirty-six applicants that the top six were ranked. And that was based upon a reconstruction level of assistance that'd be needed to the homes. So there was the top six there. And then the, the plan is projected to have four homes reconstructed and two more to ha- have as standby units in case if there was any issues with the top four being able to receive assistance. And then that I would ask that we would be able to approve the citizens' partition, participation plan and to approve the, the resolution. I can read the resolution if needed.
Do that belong to you? We got it.
Okay.
Come as a question.
I have my question. Um, you said there were thirty-six applicants?
Yes.
Were these applications from the past or they just ain't?
Yes. So the city of, I mean, Edgerton County has, has homeowners that call in and they have kept a, a good record for over the last two years. And, um, those are normally aimed at the urgent repair program Isham County has done in the past, believe it was Blue and Company. And, uh, so then we, we did a very brief evaluation of the houses there, but also being able to see houses that have substantial needs of, of repair, highlighted, highlighted those sections. Highlighted those houses to be able to be for further review. And then from there, we did a secondary inspection internally in the houses. And that allowed us to be able to, to present our findings to the Housing Selection Committee from there. And so with the internal and exterior photos of the house, that allows to, to select the top six.
Uh, no, as, as he mentioned, uh, you know, Ms. Braswell, her, her staff get calls all the time, people interested in programs like this. Unfortunately, we never get enough funds to address all the needs that we see. Uh, you may recall at your previous meeting, um, you saw a, uh, from the selection committee, the criteria. And there were things like giving priority to elderly applicants, priority to, uh, very low income, heavy low income, but gave priority to very low income, um, households. And also, as he mentioned, it was based on the needs of the homes itself that based on the inspection.
We tried to make sure that we don't put all the money in one area and kind of spread it out throughout the county and not have all of them.
Yes, a good question. In fact, one, one of the criteria for the selection committee was to try to, um, was based on geographic distribution. So I think you'll see, uh, if the applications prove, prove that it is, uh, it is a good spread across not just all of Tarboro and Conida.
Yes, the, the cities I have listed is Battleboro, Tarboro, uh, Macklesfield and Rocky Mount. Sorry if I mispronounce.
Another comfortable question.
So six, six people chose nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty-eight?
So there are four homes that we expect to be able to reconstruct. The other two are alternates in case for one, whatever reason, one of those four fall out of the process, other two are alternates.
You reconstruct four homes?
Yes.
Two hundred and thirty-seven.
I think, I think I've got it. Do you know outside of?
Yeah.
I would, I would say you could, that's a brand new house. Let's see that be a new house.
And that's, that's what this is. So most of these homes are homes that are beyond repair. As you can imagine of the applicants that we get, some need minor repairs, some need substantial rehab, we refer to it. Some are beyond rehabilitation. That is cost of rehabilitated is, is beyond a certain boundary threshold of the home. So also part of that, um, administrative costs, um, and things like the cost to have it inspected or the construction monitor.
Relocation assistance during the timeframe that the homeowners are displaced is, is a lump sum that starts to be able to help relocate themselves and their items. And then the monthly fees that come in with that during the demolition process and reconstruction process of house. So that has to be accounted for.
Are you saying you, you have to sometimes be monitor house?
Yes.
You know, the, the, the goal of these programs and this delicate balance is to try to address the most severe housing conditions out there. And in that, oftentimes you'll find homes that you could spend forty thousand dollars doing renovations and it still have significant needs. So you just can't address all of the needs. And so in that case, this program and other programs we've worked with before does allow for, they call it reconstruction. It's basically tearing down and building, building a new home.
Do they have to pay more?
No, sir. There, there is, uh, deed restrictions on the home. There's a lien on the house that they can't sell it for a certain period of time. Amount is forgiven over that period of time. If they sell within that window of time, they have to pay back all or portion of the amount that was spent.
So the citizens already know, you wish to enter or do you have a release statement?
We haven't released that yet. That, we first have to apply for these funds.
As, as part of the, um, application to the state, the homeowners will have to sign agreeing that they want to proceed with the, with the program as intended. So, yes.
Motion.
So does the committee decide that, I think there's something there, okay. But I'm going to get more of my money, like more homes that you could really get people in a good situation rather than on the, on, and two hundred thousand dollars. Then somebody will eat and spend half of it on things.
There's, few of mine. There's a seventy, so with the, with the program, with the state, we've been monitored a few times on there. And they look at, at about seventy thousand dollars per square, I mean seventy dollars per square foot. But if you exceed over seventy-two thousand dollars to repairs to the house, that's when they start looking at why, why wasn't this originally suggested to be a reconstruction? And this is one of the few programs that does allow us to be able to do that to one household with a fairly reasonable amount of time forgiven loan time with a deed of trust to secure that. But, um, the program idea is to be able to, to have that homeowner receive that type of level of assistance and also for them to be able to, to stay in that home indefinitely afterward.
We'll have to see that home to be for the elderly person to ask for what.
So the deed would travel directly to the next line of air. The only, the only time that there would be any type of recruitment process would be if the deed changed monetarily. So as long as, as long as there was no monetary transaction, then there would be no need to, um, have any repayment of that loan.
So the heirs can own it as long as they accept.
Yes.
Any other questions for the company? And none of the motions, if there's motion to make against citizen participation?
Public.
Um, public, excuse me, sorry. Is there anybody from the public that would like to? Any others to challenge? Please come forward.
I'm the Reverend Roosevelt Higgins. Historical speed, North Carolina, and I don't know whether it's Evelyn District of Commissioner Harris. But there's a situation that gone down in Speed, North Carolina, that I would like, I don't want to call the family's name, but I will talk with the manager about that tomorrow. I would hope that if there any way that some of that money could be used to address that family. They were living in the house and do mishap. They moved out of the house and as I understand, they may live, be living down in Conida now in a substantial house. But to me, the situation should have been detected. They got a house built, uh, out of group, out of Chapel Hill after the flood of ninety-nine. Do mishap with some taxes somehow, the house got from under them. And they supposed to start paying rent and people that built the house out of Chapel Hill, I understand, they came back down and got that somewhat cleared up. Or they didn't think it was fair for someone to be paying rent for a house that they built and gave to them. But the family is mentally challenged and I just feel like there ought to be some way where people know everything else about people. Yeah, they know that a family is mentally challenged. And this family has a handicapped child that is in the household as well. So it re- it real bad when you know this at the community level. But it probably happened more often than what we realized. And I'd be more than happy to talk with the manager. You may be familiar with it already.
I do ask y'all to see every dollar you can get. Is there anybody?
Good morning, good evening, everybody. Uh, I hear that there's going to be a modification to the, uh, what do you call it, the getting, uh, documents?
Oh, public records requests.
Right. I, I would suggest to save money for the county that you also, I didn't see it in the document that you proposed, that you add that you can send out PDFs instead of paper copies.
And that, and that's another item on the agenda, but so noted, yes.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to know, it, you know, it's going to be later on, so I wouldn't be able to speak, so I wish.
Okay, you big, you still able to speak. This is not the, not the, uh, this is not before, you still be able to speak. This is just a public hearing, which you're driving. See anybody here speak? Here we go. Here it is, none. The request is a motion for assistance, say, citizens' participation plan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Recommend that you approve.
Can we get a motion or assistance to base plan?
Motion to approve.
Question? All in favor, let me know by the votes on aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If there's none, the citizens' participation plan is approved. The date? Is it registered, is a motion or a request, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Recommend that you.
We have it for you. We need a motion. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes on aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here none, the resolution is approved. At this time, if all action taken, I'd like to join the public. The date? Adam on the agenda. The public hearing is called to order to receive assistance from our brothers to a special request from Barnhill Contracting Company for properly located home. Ellis, ninety, no. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public notice?
Yes, sir. Call it now as a safe idea that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Commissioners of the Edgerton County on Monday, November sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. To Jonathan Park Commissioner, Commissioner, thirty-second floor, County District, zoning, two oh one St. Andrew Street, Harbor, North Carolina. To consider a special use permit request submitted by Barnhill Contracting Company for excavation of sand, clay, and other earth materials. The property is located on N C thirty-three northwest near Ellis Lane, Harbor, North Carolina. Also identified as parcel number four eight two zero zero four six three zero two zero zero. Copies of the proposed sand mine are available for public inspection during business hours at eight to five P M. The county planning officer in two oh five County Administrative Building, St. Andrew Street, Harbor, North Carolina. All parties in interest and all interested residents are invited to be present to make their design. This is the twenty fifth day of October, twenty twenty-three by way of the Board of Commissioners of Edgerton County, signed by the Montgomery and Mondo Corporation Board.
Does that was the movement?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As, as was just mentioned by Mr. Peters, this is a, an application for a special use permit for the expansion of an existing, uh, sand pit. Um, there is a, uh, staff report summary in your packet that we, uh, submit that for the record tonight. Um, I do want to highlight as you see in your packet, um, that your options for action tonight are the following. You can choose to either approve the special use and cons- concept plan as presented. Or number two, you can approve a revised special use and concept plan. Or your third option is to deny the special use and concept point. But Mr. Peter, Peter's mentioned this is a, a quasi judicial hearing and therefore anyone who speaks tonight have been sworn in. I do believe that we have, we have just tonight a representative from, uh, Barnhill Construction. Also, Mr. Katina Braswell, our planning director, will be sworn in as well, just in case she's asked questions by you.
If there's anybody that participated in this public hearing, would you please come forward at this moment? In order to speak tonight, you have to be far.
If you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help God?
Yes. If anybody else to be far. If you decide you want to come in, I'll be this one afraid. At this time, I just will ask for comments. Comments, please, come to the other.
Uh, good evening, uh, Commissioners. Uh, we appreciate you taking the time.
Please take here.
My name is Jonathan Brocker. Um, I with Barnhill Contracting Company. Um, and on behalf of Barnhill, I appreciate you taking the time to, um, listen to our, uh, case for the special use permit. Um, this is a piece of property that we've been on just north of, um, for the last fifteen, sixteen years. Um, we are currently mining out toward N C thirty-three and getting to a place where we're going to need to expand our operation. Um, this pit, just a little background, this pit, um, supplies pretty much exclusively our asphalt plant in Rocky Mount. So this sand goes directly into the production of our asphalt. Um, all the asphalt is made in Rocky Mount. Um, so we are looking to expand it just to get some more, um, get the next layer of material, um, to make some more asphalt. Um, you know, obviously there's a particular type of material we've got to use. Um, it's not in, in every location. We've got to kind of hunt and pick where we can find it. Um, so this obviously with us being right there, um, where we are, um, made sense for us to e- expand um, just south of, of the piece of part, of property that we're actually looking at tonight. Um, we already own, um, and have a existing conditional use permit on it as well, um, that we got back in two thousand seven, eight range. Um, so this will just, just allow us to continuously mine in the same areas that we've already been. Um, we have already submitted our application for the mining permit with the state that'll regulate all of the erosion control, dust control, um, buffers, um, in addition to the, um, a hundred foot property line buffer that we'll have to abide by with the county ordinance. Um, all of, all of the wetland environmental concerns would be addressed in that, uh, permit that we received from the state. So, um, it's, it's in review. I've actually already gotten comments back. And I hope to have the, um, the permit by, before the end of the month. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Please, please, the technical review committee comments, uh, have been looked at too. What now in our, some survivors, we started work with about seventy-four.
So, um, I, in the, in the actual area of the pit, there, there obviously are none. This is, is existing just agricultural field. Um, with the application that we have for permitting, we have to identify any wells within fifteen hundred feet. If we find any, we have to survey them. And then there's a monitoring and there's actually, we have a, we have a deepwater permit, um, that, uh, we have to, um, submit data to and all, so we can monitor, make sure there's no drawdown or anything like that. Um, in this particular site, any water that we do pump, we pump internally back into the same pit that we've already, um, excavated. So there's not a lot of, of, of pumping and then discharge offsite. Everything is kept on site. So.
You know, questions for the company? For the spot. Here none? Anybody else to speak? Anybody else to make comments? Thank you. Here it done? Right, he's on the public hearing. And. The court has this this application there. And it's recommended, it's not recommended, this consideration, of approval to the board, is there a motion? Second, questions?
To be clear, that motion.
Questions? The motion in the environment surprise, that's all. All in favor, let me know by the votes side high.
Aye.
All opposed, here and none, especially this.
Mr. Chairman, we have a proposed order.
Also, along with that. Is.
I don't think it needs to be approved.
This, you think that this order is the motion.
I I think the motion.
You want to issue? We have a proposed approval, especially if we have an order, is there a motion to approve the order? Second, questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes side high.
Aye.
All opposed, here and none, the order is approved. We have scheduled comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, and I'd so like to invite Ms. Sherri Johnson, our veteran services. Director, as she's coming, you recognize there's a a lamp uh with a green bulb in it just behind you, the front of our building is lit up green. And Ms. Sherri Johnson, our veteran service director is gonna read a resolution that would explain why we did.
Good evening, good evening. Whereas the residents of Edgecombe County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly. Served our country and its community in the armed forces and. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining. The freedom and way of life and joy by our citizens and whereas Edgecombe County seeks to honor those individuals who have paid a high price for freedom. By placing themselves in harm's way for good of all and whereas the veterans continue to serve our community in American Legion. Veterans of Foreign Affairs, Religious Groups, Civil Services, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty nine states. To help former fellow former service members across the across more than. Access more than fifty two billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life. In the near future and whereas studies indicate that forty four to seventy two percent of service members. Experience high levels of stress during transition from the military to civilian life. And whereas military service members transition from military service are at a high risk for suicide during first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all county counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Lights for its veterans. Whereas the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel, the least specific recognition should be granted.
Okay, the end of veterans in the audience, would you please stand? This is just our way of saying thank you for your service. Thank you so much for the service you do. You must approve that. Second, question, all in favor, let me know by the votes side high.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you so much. Next, Mr. Chairman, is uh Ms. Betty Battle, our ESS director is here tonight to give you an update on Medicaid expansion that's about to start.
Good evening. My name is Betty Battle and I'm the social services director for Edgecombe County. And um I'm going to be, I have a presentation, there it is, it just popped up, that I'm going to be covering about Medicaid expansion. I also have with me our family to the Medicaid supervisor Tina Radford. She's here to answer any policy questions that might come up about Medicaid expansion. So as we know, um Medicaid expansion effective December the first twenty twenty three will be here in North Carolina. And right now for Edgecombe County, the state is um projecting that we're going to have about three thousand one hundred and seventy seven citizens that would be eligible. For Medicaid expansion. And they're also projecting that about twenty two thousand, no, twenty two hundred people. Who um what they call um family planning waiver eligible. Those are people that are eligible for family planning waiver, but they don't receive Medicaid. Effective December the first, they will automatically roll over and begin receiving uh Medicaid as well, so you're talking about close to fifty. About fifty four hundred people that we can um. Expect to be eligible for Medicaid come December the first. Right now, what Edgecombe County has received in um. The amount of funds that Edgecombe County has received for Medicaid expansion that we have to have spent by June, June the thirty of twenty twenty four. Is two hundred and sixty one thousand, three hundred and sixty seven dollars. And so they laid out some criteria that we can use for spending the money, which includes hiring additional staff, paying for overtime, um hiring bonuses, um. Um, purchasing equipment, improving technology, those are some of just some of the things that we can use to spend this money. After June thirty of two twenty twenty four, they are supposed to continue to fund this. Even if they do not, counties will still be able to claim reimbursement at the seventy five twenty five. And you all, I I guess you all know what that means. All right, so for all of our Medicaid positions that we have in the agency, the state pays seventy five percent of the costs. Edgecombe County pays twenty five percent that we claim reimbursement for only fifteen seventy one. So for all of our positions, the state funds pretty much the positions. Uh, even if they do not continue with the Medicaid expansion dollars, we will still continue to do the seventy five twenty five. And that's for every Medicaid positions and for our food and nutrition positions is fifty percent. Um, people that are eligible for Medicaid expansion will be able to visit the doctor. Um, for inpatient outpatient care, uh emergency healthcare, mental health, behavior health, all of those services will be covered. Through Medicaid expansions. Uh, right now, our behavior health provider is um East Point, however, um they are in the process of merging with um. Consolidating with Trillia and Trillia will be taking them over and at that time then our behavior health provider will be Trillia. Maternity and postpartum care, primary care, prescription drug benefits, they will be able to pay for prescriptions, the maximum cost that it would be for them will be four dollars. Um. These are the income limits for people who will be eligible, if you're between the ages of nineteen through sixty four. And your income is a hundred and thirty eight percent of the federal poverty level. If you're a single adult, you you're a family, a household size of one. Then uh if your annual income is equal to or less than twenty thousand one twenty, then you would be eligible for Medicaid expansion. Family of two is twenty seven thousand two fourteen and I won't go all the way down, but you can see the household in the income. Limits that is listed for each household. If you are already eligible for Medicaid, you still are, there will be no changes. Uh, non-citizens would be uh maybe eligible for Medicaid if they are they are not eligible for full Medicaid, meaning if they don't have all the required documents. They may be eligible for some form of Medicaid, like if they have to go to the emergency room, then they may be able to receive Medicaid for those purposes. But unless they're um fully documented, um there's going to be some restrictions on the Medicaid. Okay. It's not going on. To the right. Okay, we gonna quit? How much does Medicaid cost? Zero, you did not have to pay any monthly premiums for Medicaid. Uh, the highest copay, as I mentioned earlier, is four dollars and is only required on for some services. So, the information that you would need to apply for Medicaid is pretty much was listed there. You you have to have your full name, your date of birth, your social security number, or if you're an immigrant, then you will need your immigration documents. Proof of your uh um that you're a resident of North Carolina. Um, and income information that you can get from your pay stub, your W two or tax returns. We do verify the information when it's submitted, so. Uh, we put that information out there just so people know that we do verify all information that's provided. How do you apply for Medicaid? You can do it in four different ways. You can do it through E Pass, which is online, through Edgecombe County, N C dot gov, or N C D H H S dot gov, either way you can go. And apply for the Medicaid um through E Pass, you can get an application by visiting our office and or calling our office and we will mail you or. Give to you a paper application. How long does it take after you apply? It may take up to forty five days, it just depends on. If you've provided everything that's needed for your application to be processed.
And you see forty, right?
Yes, sir. And that's um, if you've provided everything that we need, if you didn't answer all of the questions or all the information wasn't provided. Then it could take longer because that then we will have to reach back out to you, ask you for that information, receive it from you, and process your application, so. That would extend the process somewhat.
What what considers this going?
They can apply now and can I call Tina up to talk about that?
Yes, because I'm I'm going to open this up to the public, too.
Okay. So Tina's going. Okay, so Tina's going to speak about the um family planning waiver and if you apply now, how that affects your application.
Good evening, I'm Tina Radford, um family and children Medicaid supervisor. Um, in order, if you apply today or tomorrow or online, if you would apply today, your application date would be November the sixth or November the seventh. Um, so therefore, if you were approved, you would get family planning program. You would get your family planning for the month of November. And then you would flip December one to the uh Medicaid expansion, as long as you met the all the income requirements and all of the other requirements that are um required. By the state. Okay, the family planning program is a family planning, it is actually more geared for the. For pregnant women, for the birth control prevention, um. It helps with, for women, it check you for breast exams, your annual checkup. Um, and your birth control choice of method. For men, it does prostate cancer exams and checks the men and the women for STDs.
Anybody from the public? Kind of the question they want to raise, probably got some folks that they can ask.
My name is Sophia Austin and I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm actually the director of Braswell Memorial Public Library in Rock Mill. State has asked the libraries and North Carolina to assist ESS with this. And um Braswell starting December the first on Fridays, we will be assisting with applications from nine to five.
Okay.
Um, there'll be December and January, there's a palette line, we'll see how it goes. And then when we, you know, we may add one more, I'm not sure, but it is something that we need to speak about. I spoke to um ESS in Rock Mill today as well, they're going to do a small training for my staff. I have like some um the same slacks and stuff, kind of what we put in there, because people come in. So yeah, so I've been doing the videos and tomorrow morning eight, I'll be training my staff. I just want to say that if it's okay.
Really?
That.
Would you mind coming to the microphone so people watching remotely can?
What I wanted to say is that we welcome people to come to Braswell, like I said, starting December first on Friday. Um, from nine to five to get assistance, but I want to make it very clear, we are not social workers, we are not caseworkers. Everything is kept confidential, we have a computer lab that we do use, but have people spaced out. And I want people to know that, we take this really seriously, it's we're gonna hold everything in confidence. But we're only gonna provide the information that they have given us, we don't give our opinions, we don't give advice, we don't do the application for everyone. We just assist them with the website and the navigation of it. And they can start and they can finish later on, but I came here tonight because I didn't know if this subject, because I've been to um Nash earlier. I didn't know this subject was gonna be here is exactly as well on the agenda, but I know that this information was needed for the citizens. But Braswell is here for, I just want to make it clear, Edgecombe County and Nash County, I think people don't understand that. Um, and then I work with all libraries, this um whether it's the community, the college libraries, we we all work together. And um we're not the only ones doing it, uh I had a a meeting with the state, uh North Carolina State Library on October the third, October fourth. Like I said, all public libraries are doing this, the directors have agreed to um help the public with this service. And I just want to say thank you and it's Braswell Memorial Public Library in Rock Mill.
Any other questions for?
Okay.
Can you tell us the total number of residents currently on Medicaid?
Yes, I can, so right now in Edgecombe County, we have nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty four citizens that are receiving Medicaid. And when we add on the projected number, which is five thousand three hundred and sixty seven, we expect to see about twenty four thousand five hundred and twenty one citizens. Receiving Medicaid in Edgecombe County.
You have permission Medicaid work?
Oh, yeah, right, so I was getting to that, but yes, we are going, we are asking, I think Eric's going to cover it, do you want me to miss, you know, you want to wait? Okay, so we were requesting to use the two hundred and sixty some thousand dollars I mentioned to you all, to use that to uh get five new positions. To assist us and we went with five because our numbers and the state gave us the numbers of the anticipated increase. And our number is, like I said, three thousand one hundred and seventy one new enrollees. And two thousand plus of the people from the family planning waiver that's gonna automatically roll over. I didn't add those numbers in because we don't have to touch those cases. So December the first, two thousand and some um family planning waiver, um citizens that are receiving that, uh will automatically roll over. Our staff won't have to touch those cases according to what the state is telling us right now, so we're only anticipating having to. Um, bring um in five new workers for those three thousand plus cases. The family planning waiver that Tina mentioned is kind of weird, it's the state policy, not ours, because. You know, we have people that are seventy years old that call us and say, why am I getting family planning? I don't need it, I'm seventy years old, I'm not gonna have any more children, but it is a requirement of the state, but it's it turned out to be a good thing. Because now all of those people are going to automatically roll over to Medicaid expansion. Um, the only other thing I have is the four um types of um. Our four providers is um, I mean, I seen a healthy blue.
Healthy Blue, Well Care, United Health Care, and Ameri. Ameri Health.
Those are the four different, um.
They're PPC brokers.
Right.
They're called the PPC brokers where they manage your doctor visits and things like that and then some of the brokers have. Other things that help the citizens of Edgecombe County and other counties that they do specifically through that broker. Um, and we are told that, you know, we can't, we can't as caseworkers, we can't advise. A client which broker to choose, we have to give them the number and they have to call and talk to the broker itself about. What their situation is and what they may 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 or may not need, because if you have a child who is. Who has a lot of health issues and a lot of behavioral issues, they may go, they may not be eligible for a broker. They may have to stay at Medicaid Direct, which is the just the regular Medicaid card, the gray card that they get in the mail. And we as social services, we can issue those cards out, we cannot issue any of the broker cards out to the client. Once the client calls and they're on the broker, we just have to give them that broker number and they have to do everything.
And um, once you uh make the application, uh you will be able to choose your broker. If you do not choose your broker, they will choose one for you and you have ninety days to change, so if you go in and you don't know who you want out of the four. Um, the state will automatically assign it to your Medicaid expansion will and you have ninety days to make that change, you can change. And you have ninety days to make that change, you can change your broker and you can change your provider, your doctor. And I think that's pretty much it, um. I can't think of anything else that we haven't already talked about, we talked about how long it would take. What happens once you're approved and if you're still not eligible, yeah, um. For the Medicaid expansion, you still have the Affordable Care Act that you're able to go and apply through there, so. Um, there are still other options for people that may not be eligible for the Medicaid expansion.
I wanted to. All of, you said there will be twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-one people in Edgcombe County Medicaid expansion?
Uh-huh.
That's fifty-one percent of our population.
I know, yeah, it is. But, um, I'm not really surprised, not really, because, um, health insurance is so, is so high, a lot of people cannot even afford it. People that are working. You know, health insurance eats up a large portion of their paycheck. So you think about the people that are making twenty thousand dollars a ye, you know, a year. Um, they're not looking at health insurance, they can't afford it.
I just wanted to reiterate.
I understand, I remember you mentioning that.
I did the math to get into a percentage.
I remember you telling me that our numbers were down to like forty-eight thousand something and I said the same thing when I did the math, I went, hey, that's almost half of it.
It's fifty point seven percent.
Any other, anybody else? Have a question? Yes, sir.
Just a comment. You had, you said you have adding three thousand people and you need five brokers?
That's all we asked for because of the amount of money that we get.
Number one per six hundred.
Um, they already carry six hundred. We got working out is carry, she carries fifteen hundred cases herself. And is supervising because of her vacancy, so all of them. You know, we got the five that we're asking for, but we also have to talk about logistics, like where you going to put them at? So, you know, we'll, there are a lot of things that go along with that, but yes, that's all we asked for five. We would like more. Thank you, thank you.
So just a, a follow up to that, as Mr. Howard mentioned, recommending adding five positions. Um, and so I, I plan to approve adding those five positions, we will be bringing back to you a budget amendment. That will incorporate the additional funds we received in anticipated, that is the startup fund you mentioned, two hundred and something thousand. Then the anticipated additional revenue for that seventy-five percent of those costs for those five employees, so. If you know anyone who's, uh, may have qualifications or incoming as caseworker for our department or such, please direct them to our website. Uh, next, I'd like to invite Mr. Antoine Brown, our emergency services director, to, uh, come to the podium, he's going to be joined with Mr. Jonathan Langley. Who's our, who's the chief of South Edgecombe Volunteer Fire Department. Um, it was brought, Mr. Webb, brought to our attention, I believe at our last meeting, concern about an issue of response, a response out in the district. So we thought that this will be a good opportunity for Mr. Brown to first of all, talk about in more general terms. Um, relationship between the county, our volunteer fire departments. Typical, uh, way things work when a call is, call goes out, mutual aid, those types of things. And then Mr. Langley is going to talk some about his, his department, he's one of fourteen departments in the county. And be happy to answer any questions you might have about that situation or anything else that was in support.
All right, good evening, uh, I'll, I'll jump right in, I prepared a presentation here to kind of guide us through some of the topics we need to cover. Um, like Eric said, of course, the roles and responsibilities and we'll talk about. Um, contractual agreements that are in place that help us really monitor and make sure. Are we good stewards of, um, what we do here and then continued support. All right, um, so again, we are, we do have, um, protection nation count is provided by, uh, fourteen. Uh, volunteer departments, then we have three municipal departments, the city of Rocky Mount, town of Tarboro. Uh, in the town of Pine Tops, uh, some of this information I'll try to push through because Chief is going to redundancy, he's going to kind of come back and talk about some of it. But it's a couple of points I want to make sure we get in my presentation. Um, of course, all of Edgcombe County, we're mandated, we got to provide fire protection, the way we do that, right? Is, uh, in municipalities or the towns or the cities. And then the other areas outside of those are covered typically by, um, volunteer fire departments, as you will see in some of the stats that will be pushed out. Um, across the nation, we see that many, uh, much fire protection is provided by volunteer departments, so this is not, uh, something that, that is new. Um, of course, most of our, in, in Edgcombe County, uh, all of our fire departments, of course, provide. Uh, fire response primarily, right, structural fire response, but they also respond. Uh, to medical calls, they do community risk reduction, which is getting out in the community, doing a lot of P R events. Uh, provide fire prevention months, last months, of course, uh, they were extremely active in that. Hazmat traffic accident, gas leaks and of course, outside fires. And so what you will see, um, in my presentation and achieves is that. Um, although fire is their primary thing, they, uh, engage in many other aspects as well. Um, of, eh, right here, this is a fire protection contract, and so I know a couple of meetings ago. Um, I made a comment, I said that, uh, the volunteer service is not, uh, what it used to be and my, my point in saying that. Is that, you know, people aren't as apt to volunteer in the fire service, I've been vol- volunteer. Uh, for about twelve, thirteen years, I started, uh, straight out of high school. Um, I enjoy, you know, getting on the fire truck, responding to calls, helping those that are in need. Um, and I don't know, people have gotten kind of busy, um, other priorities have happened, not really sure, the interest has kind of dropped down. And again, we, we see that locally, but we also see that nationally as well and people, I, I won't steal this thunder with some of this presentation. But, uh, from our seat at the county, it's our responsibility to make sure that. Uh, we stand ready, uh, to respond in the event that it's necessary. And so all of our departments, they have a biannual agreement that they sign. Uh, so typically, it's the fire chief and it's the, the board, their board of directors, their chair. Um, that signs as well as county manager, uh, signs as well, and it pretty much is a, is a governing document, right? That allows us to monitor, uh, you know, their performance and make sure. That they're, they're meeting, uh, standard as far as, uh, when a call comes out, that, that, that they're able to respond. And so in this instance, um, and I kind of cut a few pieces of, of the contract, uh, but it's really available at our office and I'm happy to email it over. Um, to you if you like it, but essentially, what, what this is doing is that anytime we have. Calls come out, right, in our, in our office. Um, or in the volunteer fire departments, when they're toned out, we typically are notified as well, particularly if. Uh, there is a no response or delayed response. Uh, what, what we do see in the county is during the day, of course, most of the volunteers are working. Uh, volunteer fire departments primarily started, uh, from, uh, like farmers in different communities. Uh, seeing the need for fire protection or community activities seeing the need for fire protection and. Um, and a lot of them, uh, really kind of funding the fire service themselves, their own dollars. Uh, kind of protecting, uh, their communities from fire, of course, that's evolved, um, over time and we've moved to now, um, uh, individual districts, uh. Having a fire tax, uh, to support the, uh, the local departments now to be able to operate. Um, what, what you do see here is, is in this, so we, at the county level, we monitor the departments, um. Their responses to calls, uh, any type of calls, uh, we monitor their training hours, we monitor. Um, their ability to, uh, respond within nine minutes, of course, is up here as well. Um, and their rosters, right, having an adequate number of people on their roster, uh, to be able to, uh, support themselves on the fire scene. Uh, this next slide again is a lot of the departments, all of the departments in Edgcombe County, uh, we have, uh. Interlocal agreements, if you will, that, uh, the departments all, uh, choose to, uh, work together to support each other. Um, and so it's not com, it, it is common, excuse me. Um, that if you have a call in a local district, that you're probably going to get three other surrounding, uh, fire districts to, to, to respond with them. Uh, for example, if you have a fire call that comes out in Princeville, uh, you will have Speed, uh, Canita. And South Edgecombe come as well, and it's not because Princeville can't get there, we recognize that. It takes a lot of people to run a fire scene and to extinguish a fire, I mean, a lot of manpower, and so to make that happen. Um, that there's automatic aid agreements, when we say automatic aid, that means that they're automatically punched. Initially, uh, when the call, uh, comes out, um, I do have here, uh, the communications director, uh, Mike Attagnas on the nine one one center. And a couple of the fire chiefs here just came just to kind of show their support. Um, because we recognize that this is important, right, this is a top priority to protect, protect lives and property. And so we want to, we take it very seriously and so, um, to be able to speak to this, um, we definitely want to be in support. So all of the departments in Edgcombe County definitely, uh, they kind of come together, they agree. Uh, to, uh, to, to work together, uh, this specifically kind of speaks to, uh, what, uh. The non-primary department would bring, what their commitment to the other department, uh, anytime a call comes out. And this is primarily, uh, for structured response, but it also goes, um, along with any other type of, uh, call, whether it be, uh. Uh, a outside fire, uh, or a traffic accident. In the area. Um, so before I pass it off to Chief Langley, uh, again, like I talked before. Uh, we are seeing a decline in the volunteer service membership, not only locally but nationally. Um, I believe you all have, um, some statistics or a handout from the National Volunteer Fire Council. That kind of talks about it over time, but I think it's at least worth saying. That, um, our local departments have been really doing a great job, um, with continuing to maintain a continuity of service. Uh, considering what we, what, what we're seeing with the decline of membership. And so my, my point in saying that, hey, we're seeing a decline is really to motivate and promote. Um, all of our community partners and, and stakeholders to continue to support, uh, their local volunteer fire departments. Everybody can't fight fire or pull hoses or, or join in active membership, but they can be involved and attend. Um, you know, their department meetings, um, Edgcombe County, we have a public safety association. That encompasses all of our local fire departments, uh, municipalities as well. Uh, law enforcement and EMS, forestry, fire patrol, multiple entities are there. And these are exactly the things that we talk about quarterly, um, at these meetings so that we stay ahead of, um. Of, of where the, the national decline is kind of he- headed. So our current posture moving forward, uh, from our office is to continue to monitor and support our local fire departments, uh. To continue the work they are doing, um, as incidents arise, we always investigate them first and foremost, uh. Uh, the chiefs are, are contacted directly, um, if there are concerns or things that come up. Or we need more clarification and they work very diligently with us to, uh, provide that information, it's very minimal. Uh, that, that we have those conversations, uh, but again, of course, because we have these agreements in place with them. Uh, we continue to hold, um, that, that compliance piece to make sure that they are meeting standards and, and. If we do see that we get to a place where, um, our department is, is low performing or not meeting standard. Then we're, uh, in a position ahead of time, uh, to, to support them as best we can and provide strategies. Um, and resources, but if it continues to decline, then we know that we're going to have to step in with the plan to be able to continue. Uh, fire protection services in whatever respective district that is. All right.
Next.
Yep.
Richie.
Good evening, I'm, uh, I'm Jonathan Langley, I'm the fire chief for South Edgecombe Rural Fire Department. I've got a presentation put together as well, uh, just a few things that I'd like to cover tonight. Where do you, there it is, so I'm here to respond to the concern by the county commissioners in reference to the response that we had. And, uh, also to educate and provide information about the volunteer fire departments and where we're currently at. Uh, I, I like to give real numbers the best I can, a lot of my information came from the volunteer, uh, fire council. So, uh, so that's where we pulled a lot of it from. As far as the incident, it was a grass fire, uh, dispatched as a grass fire on NC one forty, one twenty-four west on August eighteenth of twenty twenty-three. Our station is station fourteen, South Edgecombe was dispatched, we had personnel that responded, uh, be it privately owned vehicles. Um, and after five minutes, we have a policy in place through the county, as he was talking about, that after five minutes. Uh, if they do not get, if the dispatch does not get a response from one of our members saying we're in route, we're on scene. They dispatch the next closest department, uh, which happened to be station thirteen, which is Michael's Field. Uh, so after that five minute lapse of time, uh, station thirteen was dispatched. And, uh, Bakent, Bakers Town, as, uh, was mentioned, came also, but they came. Probably forty-five minutes or so into the incident and at the request of the on-scene incident commander. Um, some of the things I'd like to talk about is standard operating procedures that we have in place. Uh, for when we do have those limited staffing occurrences. Uh, doesn't happen a whole lot, but it does happen every now and then, but. Uh, the safety that I want to give the community and our commissioners as well is there's a plan in place for it. Uh, when it does happen, there are things that we have, uh, as the fire chiefs of Edgcombe County. And, uh, emergency management has put in place to take care of those incidents when you have a department that may not have adequate personnel. Um, and so that procedure actually worked the way that it was intended to that particular night. Uh, this incident happened on a Friday night and it was around six, six-thirty in the evening. And the incident actually lasted till a little after midnight, so it was a pretty long drawn out incident. Um, just to talk about the response schedule for that particular area. Uh, station fourteen is the primary in district, uh, for South Edgecombe, Michael's Field would be second in. West Edgecombe and Lewis Community would be the third and fourth, we have a four department response for every area of our district and it depends on what area it is. Um, which departments go, but that was the response schedule for that particular district. Uh, we talked about Bakers Town, uh, Bakers Town is on station thirteen's response schedule and they run close in to the Wilson County line. Uh, they actually had an incident this afternoon where Michael's Field went into Wilson County to assist them with a structural fire and a grass fire. Uh, so it, it's a common thing for us to cross the county line to be able to help each other out. Um, and as a fire chief, I will say, I don't condone us not getting a truck in route. I'm not here to really defend that because there's no excuse for it. Um, I, I could sit and blame it on staffing, I, there's a lot of things I could blame it on. But reality is the public expects us to show up and we failed to do so, so I'll, I'll own that as a fire chief. Um, but what I will say is that I don't condone it, but it does happen and when it does happen, the policy worked the way that it should have. Uh, that particular incident ended up being a gas leak, an underground L T cylinder. Uh, so best course of action was to let it burn until the gas department could get on scene and get it taken care of. They ended up, uh, opting to burn, burn the tank off, burn all the fuel out of the tank that night. So they rerouted it and we stood by basically for the length of that incident while they burned it off and got everything controlled. Um, so I, I will ask if you have any questions on that incident, I'll be more than happy to answer them, but if not, I'm going to move forward. Yes, sir.
So you're telling me station thirteen responded after five minutes with an apparatus or not?
No, sir, they actually responded, they, one of their officers checked in route. And they had an additional tone out at ten minute mark, um, at the request of the incident commander that was on scene with radio.
I mean, I was in the volunteer fire department for you and I, I agree, you understand everything, I, I was huge when I leave this one. Y'all did respond with an apparatus.
So.
That same phone, you like the person on Friday night?
It is, um, and the, the gentleman that actually checked in route lives a little closer to that area. So he didn't drive back to the station to get apparatus. Um, I live locally in that area also and truthfully. I would, I wouldn't have drove all the way to Pine Tops to get apparatus, I would have went to the scene to start doing what I could do. And then request of resources as necessary. Um, again, not best practice, but we, we try to look out for each other in the different areas, we, we know where our volunteers live. So, um, so we try to look out for each other in that aspect to keep us from having to drive so far, but also to get people on scene quicker. Um, and we don't always hear, eh, as far as dispatch, they don't always catch our members checking on scene. Because they don't all have radios, um, just your officers are going to be the ones with radios and then we have radios on the trucks once they get there. Any other questions? Okay, uh, so I'm going to cover a few, uh, national statistics, I guess it's. If it'll move. I don't know where I'm supposed to be pointing, there it goes. So across the nation, we have twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-two departments nationwide. Eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three are all volunteer departments, they don't have any paid staff, they get no monetary recovery. There's five thousand three hundred and thirty-five that are mostly volunteer. That means they probably have some sort of paid staff Monday through Friday or maybe one or two days a week, something of that sort. You have two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine that are mostly career, that would be your departments that are similar to Tarboro. That, um, they have a career paid guys there, but they are supplemented by volunteers. And then there's two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five that are all career departments, in other words, they don't have any volunteers, everybody is paid members. In two thousand eighteen, seven, seven hundred and forty-five thousand volunteer firefighters were reported in, uh, North Carolina. Uh, or across the nation, excuse me, that's twenty-eight volunteer firefighters per department on average. Um, the total calls that were run across the nation was thirty-six million seven hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred. Uh, you could see in two thousand nineteen. Uh, you could see in two thousand nineteen, the volunteers started to drop off. It dropped down to seven hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred uh, volunteer firefighters across the nation. That dropped that average number down to twenty-seven. And then the call volume went up in two thousand nineteen to thirty-seven million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand. In two thousand twenty, you see our numbers dropped again. If we all remember what happened in two thousand twenty, COVID hit. A lot of people got scared when COVID hit and we run medical calls in the volunteer fire service, just as well as any other, uh, any other emergency medical things. We run those type of calls. So there were people that got scared of it and they completely got out. They said, I don't have to be here. So they walked away from it. Um, you got twenty-five people on average per department across the nation. And when I say on average, they, that means you could have some departments that have forty, forty-five members, but on the flip side of that, you have some that may not have the fourteen or fifteen. Um, and then the call volume dropped a little bit in two thousand twenty because we s- kind of reined back on running the medical calls. We let EMS handle that. And that was by design. Our county actually did that. The volunteers quit running medical call, calls across the board during COVID to protect and give that reserve in case we did have fires or other types of emergencies. So our numbers across the nation are actually declining at a regular basi- on a regular basis and a regular rate. The twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-two numbers have not come out yet. Um, in Edgecombe County, and I'll speak to this specifically, you heard there's fourteen departments that receive funding from our tax, our fire tax in Edgecombe County. We have three departments that are municipalities for a total of seventeen. Rocky Mount, Tarver and Pine Tops are not funded through the county fire tax. They're funded through the municipalities. You have Sharksburg, Battleburg, Sharp Point, Whittakers and Fountain that receive funding from Edgecombe County, but they're not actually considered Edgecombe County departments. These are departments that are, that may be sta- had their stations in Nash County, but they're close enough to the line, run with us and have areas in our district. Then you have Hartseas, Principal, Speed, South Edgecombe, Michael's Field, Leggett, West Edgecombe, Lewis Community and Caneta that are all funded through our, through our fire tanks. So there's twelve OSFM registered Edgecombe County fire departments. The ones that are all volunteered include Michael's Field, Caneta, Speed, Leggett, Lewis and Pine Tops. That means they don't rec- they don't have any paid staff here. They, they don't have anybody that helps out other than their volunteers. They're completely supported by volunteers. Our mostly volunteer departments are West Edgecombe, South Edgecombe, Brentwood and Hartseas. West Edgecombe has a program they run at, um, they run paid staff, one person per day, Monday through Friday, eight to five. South Edgecombe is in a similar situation. Uh, we run one person Monday through Friday, eight to five. I think Brentwood's department, if I'm not mistaken, has a three-day, uh, where they have two people, three days out of the week. And then Hartseas program, I'm not a hundred percent sure on what they're actually doing. Um, but they, they have some sort of paid staff often on throughout their own departments. And then you have your other two departments that you see there. So out of our mostly volunteer departments, I want to give you the numbers where we're really at. Uh, West Edgecombe has two stations. They have primary station, substation. They have thirty-seven members on their roster. One thing I want you to remember about these roster numbers is it includes auxiliary members, which are not interior firefighters. And it also includes the junior, senior members who are through the county's work and are on our teams. So Michael's Field has one station with nineteen members. South Edgecombe has two stations with thirty-eight members. I can attest to where we're going at because of my involvement. We have five paid staff members, so we have thirty-eight. We have two, actually twenty-two volunteer teams, five junior members and six our members. So we're talking about a week, you know, and after eight, nine, Monday through Friday, we have twenty-two volunteer teams that respond. The thing about that, that we're seeing too, is of those twenty-two volunteers we have to win, we're getting some sort of funding. Our purposes are to, we have, we have, we have twelve, we have actually one or two. Now, Caneta has one station, twenty-three members, Speed, one station, thirteen members, Brentwood has one station, twenty-six members. Uh, Leggett has one station, thirteen members, Oxy has one station, twenty-eight. Those are the two, the two stations, twenty-five, Pine Tops has one station, thirty. That leaves us with two thirty, we need to total off for them, serving thirty-eight thousand people. That's when a firefighter, thirty, when a firefighter. Right, that's a tank. And fifty-nine of those firefighters that are actually serving time in the interior, that's a lot. I said it, I'm not gonna lie, it was, it seems, it's time to see what you have to do, actually, to help them. And that's when interior fire officers are, to, to, to help people. We talked about drivers, it's loss implications, if you ever had a fire, if you're not, it's a crime. We have to check many drivers, we have to track them. This is a lot smaller than, some of those, some of those, they're a lot to drive. And all the work that has been done, we have special training. That's sixty-seven, sixty. And we have, we have, we have, we have, we have. We also, we also.
Interior fire. Which is almost unheard of. Um, but that's where we're at. Not many of them, but we do have some. So our recruitment retention, Charlie, this is where the rubber meets the road and where we can actually say, what can we do to fix things? So time demands, um, family, work, school, college, sports, other clubs, that's what's taken away from your, from your local fire, volunteer fire departments. You have training requirements, call volume, uh, changing the nature of the business, uh, and when I talk about that, it's rising costs and abuse of services by the public, uh, running the mul- multiple EMS incidents for stump todes and things like that. Uh, it, it takes its toll on the volunteer. Um, and then greater public expectation of the fire department response and our capabilities. Mr. Brown actually spoke of how many different things we've been involved in. Uh, it's not just firefighting more. It's hazmat, it's EMS, it's, it's a lot more to it than in what it used to be. Uh, the change in sociological conditions, leadership problems, agent communities and then internal conflicts. Those are the things that we face when we talk about recruitment and retention. And I want to speak, uh, specifically on the three that are highlighted. Um, so what can we do? Our changes in sociological conditions, the recruitment takes time. Uh, and let's be real, we're already volunteers and spending more time doing recruitment, uh, it, it's tough. It takes money to be able to put the things together and that takes money from a- our actual firefighting capabilities. And it puts more stress on our department members. It's a necessity, but of only a limited number of people actually believe enough in recruitment and, and looking into this stuff to get involved in. So of those twenty-two youth that I have in my department, you might have five or six that actually believe enough in recruitment to show up and help the things. They'll show up to the fires, but they're not gonna show up to the recruitment events. Um, and, and that's not saying anything bad about them. They have obligations at home and work everywhere else too. So what we're currently doing for South Edgecombe in recruitment aspects is, uh, word of mouth. That's our, that's one of our best tools. Walking in, getting to know somebody, say, hey, you interested in joining volunteer fire department? It's a good place to hang out. We'll teach you some things, there's a W and Mike, especially a number of those, uh, and we'll teach you things that are good. And, and that word of mouth is a great tool. Um, we, we focus on parades. We do a couple of parades throughout the year. We have career days that we go to with, at the local schools. We put signs out in front of the stations. We do social media outreach. And, and we currently have a plan involvement in the public safety program that's getting up and going to Southwest Edgecombe High School. Uh, that's gonna be a great tool for us. We've actually got a couple of junior members that come in recently because of that program that's starting up. So what we need, um, from a volunteer fire department standpoint is we need our communities to get involved and help us out. Um, we need help in recruitment and retention. Uh, we need people to encourage their younger family members to get involved to, to take some pride and ownership in your community and where you actually live and step up and say, I, I want this to be a better place and this is the way that I can do it. So there's a place for everybody and so we're looking for people to get involved. So when I talk about our training requirements and the change in the nature of the business, the stations, equipment, training, we need to focus more on quality rather than quantity. Uh, this is gonna help with retention because people won't stay at a department where they can't really learn and they won't stay where they don't have the appropriate equipment to do the job correctly. Um, in, in Edgecombe County, we currently have three, uh, officer state fire marshals, OSFM that are through training facilities. That's almost, um, it's one of those places we have to have access and we can go and train. Sitting in front of a computer screen is not gonna work anymore. Being able to go out and burn houses like we used to is almost unheard of because of all the requirements that's been placed on us. So we're developing these training facilities. You've probably been down to fifty-eight, seen the big comics boxes or been through Tarver and seen their comics boxes, but all of these training facilities are being built. The association has decided to, 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 you talked, heard Mr. Brown talk about our association. We decided to conduct four county-wide parades a year where we get all of the departments in Edgecombe County together and we train together four times a year. And that's hosted at one of these facilities, so we're able to get good quality training. Then you have, um, costs, that's always a factor. And I'm not one to sit and talk about money a whole lot, but you can see here that apparatus costs are above six hundred thousand dollars. Y'all, um, agreed to purchase a fire truck for the county not too long ago. Uh, right at six hundred thousand dollars, not a little more. Um, the truck that you see pictured in the top is a two thousand nine. That's our newest truck in the fleet at South Edgecombe and we purchased it for two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in two thousand nine. So that's the difference in what the cost has gone up to. Um, and then gear and all the other equipment that we have is going up too. We, we reach out, we do grants through the state, we do grants through, uh, other, other agencies to help kind of, uh, fund this stuff. But it's tough, um, writing those grants takes time and again, it's a volunteer or- organization, so it takes time. So what can you do from, as a commissioner's standpoint, as a community's standpoint? You can get involved. Ask your local departments about volunteering. Um, is there something you can, there's something you can do regardless of your age. We have auxiliary members, we have junior membership, we need people to, to train new younger people. And it doesn't necessarily just have to be in firefighting. They need to train new business aspects. They, the, the volunteer fire departments and businesses. And so we need the help with training and those aspects for the people coming up. Um, learn your local fire department and its needs. They have regular meetings, training events, find out when they are on show. Ask, hey, hey, what are you gonna put on? How, how do you handle this, like, this? Uh, what, what do you do with this situation? Uh, you can contact me by, via email, southedgecomefire.com if you have questions that you may think of later on that you won't answer. I'll be happy answering you if I can. Again, I thank you for your time and for listening to it. If you have any questions now, I'll answer them the best that I can.
Any questions? I just don't think I know what's coming. The presentation is educational, it's educational, uh, what you're actually doing and I think we're speaking of all of you. I'm understanding and I, and I guess in terms of what county can do, I think you are the, the, our visions, uh, all of the ground, uh, you know, sometimes they really aren't going to suggest to us in terms of those kinds of things. Yeah, feed a programs to our professional fire departments, okay, when they come. Training, uh, almost training, they might have to do some different amount of training for other departments, but, uh, I, I still support those efforts in terms of anything that I'm working to, because, uh, we do ask you, we do volunteer for that service and, uh, the law department understands it. Some of the stress rates to get the cause of that. Thank you so much, brother.
Thank you.
The volunteers.
Mr. Lee, may I make one comment? I, I just want to commend Mr. Brown, Mr. Langley, Mr. Langley gave me a call at home. I guess I'm the cause of the fact of this presentation, but, uh, Mr. Langley, thank you so much. We appreciate your response and, uh, you know, as a commissioner, when I have a concerned citizen, I did my part, you've done your part and we all do. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
And we better understand your part. I think it is an understanding of how it works. Thank you. Move on.
Mr. Chairman, uh, next we have with us tonight, Mr. Sherrod Knox. He's with an organization called When People Work. And they do good work, uh, to assist people who are justice impacted. And, and in fact, they've done some work more specifically with our sheriff's office and Mr. Knox will share with you more about, uh, the work.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sherrod Knox. This is Ray, Ray E. from Lovey Program Director. She's gonna give you all a copy of the presentation. Several, again, getting to try to work, um, when you work in a company that's like, well, you could, uh, that, uh, started originally, I'll say, uh, been about, even if it was about ten years now. Uh, we run a variety of programs in New York, both in Maine and in Hampshire. Uh, but kind of, I've been asked to, to both Carolina and Maine, is to take kind of the best of what they've brought over the past decade. So what we offer is seminary services for different, um, and different, uh, reentry. So they are housing, job training, uh, management, uh, physical health education, uh, regular health. Anything that you're trying to jump up on the different, uh, anything that was big things to add, uh, that's what we provide. And where we are different and really unique to other reentry programs is that we are an all-inclusive program. We're not, we don't have all these services siloed off. You come and you sign up for us and, um, the job training person works with the housing person. And so that way, it's not, you're signing up for seven different programs. You're signing up for one program and all of that is together for us. Uh, we've existed in North Carolina for about a year and, uh, we've been able to collect a little bit data about whether appropriate. Our program, we're happy to tell you, uh, we work very well with the Edgecombe County Sheriff's here. Uh, I, I wish that every sheriff's office, every local, as easy and fantastic work as we've worked in that year. Um, in our program over the last year, we had about, I think it's about two hundred people who are in the jail waiting to come out. About seventy-five people, I think, or maybe somebody, uh, of people active in our program, uh, with only three people who participated. So we, we know we're able to see that running this program here, um, really successful, really helpful. I'll tell you that the one thing that, as I get a chance to speak to Mr. Ed, but like, the one thing is I get kind of disappointed is that, you know, like I wonder kind of what's. Uh, plus what, 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 how we do is how we're able to run all these services in the area. We're able to do this through a unique public-private partnership called Able Success Contract. Uh, there are now in North Carolina right now, but there are multiple examples federally and other states as well. The way it works, we have, uh, backed by, by the funder, Make Home Capital, they're offshoot of Golden Sacks. And what they do is they fund, uh, programs like this to help the community. That's literally their entire existence is to fund organizations like this. The way they do it is they, anything that we need, so anything from, uh, we're partnering in Wilson County, right, so helping to rebuild an apartment complex or income people, all the way to, uh, caseworkers that run people and help them out. And what they did is they agreed to fund us fully for five years. And on the front of that, what happens? And on the front of that, what happens is we, as we need to have government partners in order to have, in order to have that happen. The government partner serves two purposes. One is for data collection of data that, that, we've managed to do that through the sheriff's. Um, and so we, we have the basic data. The second thing is, um, it's called paper success. Because if our program doesn't work, we don't think it's going to exist. And we're constantly evaluated by each person that comes to our program, with people to a computer system. Everything from documents, uh, job, training, interviews, anything else like that. Each of those things are documented. So what we, what we do is at the end of the five years, we come back to you all. Well, well, you, you remember this is right in the front beginning. So it's no surprise costs or anything else like that. But, um, we come back and we evaluate how successful the program is. As the, the program has saved you all some money, we ask for a portion of that back to keep the program running. So say, for instance, we saved a little bit of bucks, uh, we ask for like about thirty, forty bucks to keep program running. Um, so in North Carolina, it tells us it costs about fifty to fifty-four thousand dollars per facility per person per year to keep a person in prison in North Carolina. So our program is certainly significantly less expensive than that. Um, we have a video that we queued up. Uh, we're able to show that in order to get some testimonials from your sheriff's department as well to see some people good for our program. And while they, while they work on that.
Included myself. And sometimes, um, you just need somebody to bring you out, to reach down and pull you up.
Every day, I, I, I was concerned before. So I know how I need to get out. I don't have nothing. And I just thought, oh. It's, that's hard because you know about with a family, you can have so many things you can do with a family, you know what I'm saying? And the type of feeling I had, I couldn't even get this further. Like, I got mine for the rest of my life. It definitely, I have, I got one choice. I think it's wrong, but now I'm saying like, um, I ain't been in trouble since ninety-eight, twenty-two, twenty-three. I ain't have a ticket and still holding it against me.
Okay, so initially, um, when participants, when I do a intake, we, it's like a foundation to me. So you have to have a driver's license or ID, a social security card, and a versatile certificate. Because depending on what we're gonna do, if you're in a job, some of those documents are gonna be requested.
Things small to big things, but, um, I wouldn't have stood in my situation. I'm gonna have a car, you know, you know, a job, and that, and whatever, I would be able to say yes to it. I mean, if they wanted that.
Stay on that couch ninety percent of the days. Too smart, he almost did. These, these signs, I mean, um, you know, almost like, sort of, do a little statement. But I encourage them, um, and the thing, I think, closely about this, it's not kind of the only where, you know, we don't do that thanks, like.
When I walk out of jail, I'm hoping to spend more time with my grandkids. Um, go to programs to help me to know how to drink and get back on the right path with my life.
Struggle back into, you know, things that they used to, like, bring back, you know, aggressive times.
Um, it really makes their confidence go up. It's very fun to do. And they just feel, it's great to see their confidence after the process. Um, even in the process, they just feel hammered and, you know, really amazing.
I mean, these some folks that have some folk in my facility that know how to talk to my staff. And I'm just so excited about parting with, with people work. Uh, and I think, and I want people to know this, not talking to sheriff's office anyway. All we had to do was open our door. And a lot of you all, Tommy, and you, and great things can come from this.
I'm like a doll baby.
So that's a, a short video that kind of shows some of the work, some people helped. Uh, just, just kind of, in the beginning. Um, we operate currently in Wilson, Edco, at County of Raleigh. So some of them are from, a little bit from all over to the participants are. Um, but yeah, also I want to give a thank you to all my staff who's stayed over late tonight to help me out with this presentation and everything. And again, to the sheriff's office as well. Um, what questions you all have?
Any questions?
Um, our, our headquarters is in Raleigh. Uh, right now, we kind of, we, again, because we work so closely with the, with the jail here. Uh, we go in and out of the jail. So our case workers come into the jail and operate that.
How long you say you've been in that area?
Uh, in Edco County, I believe it was January, yeah, I believe it was in January, we came in.
Yeah, same. There were other programs that were funded by state funds that don't receive this.
One or two year funds. So what is, what are you asking us?
So, well, first of all, I'd love the chance to get a, to get a chance to meet with you all more outside of this, to get a full breakdown of, of, um, what paper success. Of, like, ultimately what I love is a paper success, free group is Edco County.
Well, uh, uh, certainly, continue to talk with everyone.
Okay.
You know, uh, we got some folks up there for, it's, it's, it's savers, they're interested in, okay? It's the savers for our county who certainly would, would, would be interested in it. We always so much interest in reentry. Yes, they're interested in, I kind of support it where we could. So. Continue to talk with everyone, and, uh, and look at what you might be requesting of us.
Yes, sir.
If you, go ahead.
I was, one more point I, I realized I missed. Part of paper success is that if, uh, we come to the end of the five-year agreement and we've not saved off any money, it's no repayment whatsoever. So it's, again, it's all.
Well, I guess, uh, we, we're gonna say it might be some people. In terms of, when you come back and make that request, well, uh, uh, depending upon it, I think many of us would be saying, okay, if you can show us where you've saved us, okay? Um, I think we, I'll say, for the, we, we certainly will look at it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay. Do anybody need to take a break? At this time, let's take public petitions, uh, if anybody here, they voted, likes, he's coming to take your name and address.
Good evening. My name is James Ryan, Senator for NC Highway, Nice Avenue, East Lake. And Vice President of the East Historic Society, African American history of Edco County. And on behalf of our president, made a stand that the members of the East Society want to thank his board for continuing to support us. We had two great assistants in the spring, the, uh, premier of the film, We Can Do Better, which highlighted the, uh, campaign just to keep IBP out of Edco County. And we're also unveiling a North Carolina Civil Rights Trail marker to the East, uh, Resistance League, uh, here in Chautauqua, North Street. Um, this Saturday, uh, November eleventh, eleven o'clock in Red Hill Missionary Baptist Church. We will be unveiling a new North Carolina Highway Starboard marker, uh, that recognizes some history that we have, uh, recovered and researched. And brought out of the, uh, brought up that has not been recognized. Uh, of meetings of freed people in eighteen sixty-six in the, uh, area of North Edco County. That, uh, there are hundreds of, of freed black people who gathered and me, having meetings, fighting for the Equal Rights League. And fighting for higher wages, voting rights, and self-defense. This was during the time period, people were freed from slavery, but not get had the right to vote. And powers that be were trying to turn the clock back. Uh, and people stood up. People, farm workers in this county stood up and made a difference. And, uh, we're gonna program will be at the Red Hill Missionary Baptist Church this Saturday, eleven o'clock. And, uh, our speaker will be David, Dr. Historian David Zelski, in, in the past, he's a right advisor. Welcome. The, the, the marker will read Equal Rights League, Newly Freed People Eighteen Sixty-Six. Rallyed at Hammond's Hill here for voting rights, fair wages, and self-defense, became an early civil rights organization. Chairman Wiggins and Mr. Powell will be there. Hope you're all here too. Thank you.
I'll just say, yeah, well, it's a real education to me, since you happened to be in the area. It's a lot of history to kind of, we're not aware of, so I would encourage you to change if you can. If you have no evidence, real interest in me. Thank you.
Good evening again. Remember to raise our heads and our hand for attorney, for the other one, in case you need contact. Now, my correspondent, post office box two six four, speaking, I, I have some information I want to show you all. Here's some information here. I want to look to your agenda, where y'all have, up in the Carolina, America, I just want to say, thank y'all. That y'all have done an excellent job dealing with that issue. And we all hope and pray that this will come out of this manner. Will you add anything? Also on your agenda, if you have a consideration of a resolution to recognize Native American heritage, my. Uh, y'all have a document that kind of show that once Edco County was a historic home, did how you pronounce that word, Mr. Manager?
Tastor.
Tastor. Indian. And I think it's, again, it's important that we don't leave out anyone when it comes down to Edco and Edco history. Also, y'all have on your agenda, the light, the resolution, and, uh, Mr. Walter Plummer Jr. Mr. Walter Plummer, who spent there to make excellent service to Edco County for many years and many capacity. And I stand here proud at your light to display y'all some wax. This is a record that we recorded down at Cuneta High School in the auditorium in nineteen seventy. Of directorship of Mr. Walter Plummer Jr. I was seventeen years at the time, fifty-three years ago. But I, I didn't just bring one, I brought two. I want y'all to get a feel of it. Of not too many black high schools in the state that did that happen in nineteen seventy.
Just steal it, pass it back?
Yeah.
You want some, want some history back?
Yeah, I want my history back. And also, um, um, this summer.
Make sure everybody, everybody feel it. Nobody can play it, other than me.
We also see, y'all, y'all, the general, y'all have a resolution, uh, to support Frank there with the name of the bridge. We ask that y'all do that if you will. And on December the twenty-third, our charity church, y'all should have a copy of that as well. We can do a concert in honor of Mr. Plummer. He touched the lives of many of people in this area. And we just want to carry on his legacy. Uh, so the charity on December the twenty-third at three o'clock, we can do a Christmas concert in his arms. And y'all knows, there's another attachment I have. If you look to the back row, you'll see someone that you should have recognized, but that was fifty-three years ago. So I had changed somewhat since that time, but I stick to. And also, I want to ask y'all to do this for the town of Frankville. This is my friend, General Hugh Shelton. Most people are General Hugh Shelton as the joint chief of staff. And that's what this honor here kind of give a little history. Just manage. I have two things. And I didn't go back and dig this up. I got this out of Welcome to Chautauqua Magazine. Let y'all in the audience to know, Sam. But General Shelton and I, believe it or not, were raised up on the same farm, his family farm, but he worked on the farm just like everybody else did. And I was telling the county manager, his grandmother was a student teacher. And his grandfather was a, what they call county auditorium for Edco County. As I understand it, for General Shelton, years ago, they had referred to him as county manager, they would refer to as county auditorium. And when I came to know the county, it was county manager, and that Adam B. Harold was the manager at the time. And that's one part of people. I'm giving y'all another piece, because I want y'all to, to promote the town of Frankville. Uh, on the back of this, if you ride through Edco County, you'll see signs that say, Welcome to Edco County, home of General Hugh Shelton. Some of y'all have seen those signs. If you go out, uh, along the road and Highway forty-two and go through what brings you up. There's one down to Pitt County, uh, Edco County line, and you also see one down to the Chris area. So what I want y'all to do, the town of Frankville is a part of Edco County, and I'll be doing the same thing if it was the other way. So what you got, uh, Welcome to Edco County, home of General Hugh Shelton. I want you all to consider asking for a sign, go somewhere all over the county, saying, Edco County, home of the oldest black town in Charlotte by blacks in America. It's a part of our history. We should be proud of it. And I would say y'all support that resolution that was the one for the Native American. And here's a copy of the album cover, y'all. It's a cover. I'm proud of it. Very proud of it. I wish, in fact, I've been using a little bit more. But anyway, I thank y'all for y'all's time. And I'm about excellent hours here, because I have a, a bed appointment. Now, fuck bed appointment.
A bit further than speed.
Anybody else for public petition? Anybody else for public petition? There are none. Moving on. Thanks, you gentlemen. Let's have it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have a, a few budget amendments for your approval and a few others for your review. I draw your attention to those that need front of your, uh, groupings of budget amendments there. You see budget amendment number one. As you will know, at your last meeting, you, uh, directed staff, you agreed to appropriate a million dollars of fund balance for purchased vehicles through the sheriff's office. This is a budget amendment to capture that. What you'll also see in that budget amendment is, uh, we recently sold, uh, some cars that you surplus a few months ago. Uh, to the tune of a little over twenty-four thousand dollars. So this budget amendment recommends re-appropriating that money into the same capital outlay line. Also seventy-three thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars, uh, insurance proceeds to vehicles that were involved in a, uh, accident, sheriff's vehicle. That were totaled. And so those are the payoffs for those two vehicles. So recommending that we appropriate the million for that. Twenty-four thousand for surplus vehicles sold, as well as proceeds from the, uh, from the insurance on those two vehicles into capital outlay. For purchase of vehicles for sheriff's office. Um, just as a note that, uh, we have that out to bid now for per, uh, vehicles, as well as outfit of those vehicles. Um, that was out for, uh, for about three weeks, I believe it was. We all received two bids. A procurement policy says they have to go out a second time. The second time, uh, we can receive only one bid. We can still proceed. That would be a contract to be brought back for your approval. Those second round of bids are due back this Thursday. Budget amendment number two is, uh, you originally appropriated, um, or reserved, uh, ARCA funds or ARCA-enabled funds. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to purchase heavy equipment in solid waste department. Uh, we purchased a new, uh, backhoe there for a little around eight, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The balance of that, forty thousand two hundred and eighty dollars is remaining. And so recommending that we roll that forward to current year's capital outlay to purchase, um, a compactor. For one of our, uh, convenience sites, um, for solid waste department. Budget amendment number three is, um, this is a health department. This is a routine budget amendment. You see relatively small numbers there, but the reason that it is included here in the second. included here in the section where you must approve is because it includes, uh, moving some funds out of salary, and this is for some funding received from the state. As you'll recall, one of the provisions of our budget amendments is that anything that involves, um, anything that involves movement in or out of salary, salary-related lines, regardless of the amount, that's your approval. Budget amendment number four, um, again, this is, uh, funding received in healthy communities, uh, program, bringing this to you because this also includes appropriation, or part of budget, budget amendment includes salary line. Budget, budget amendment four A, this is COVID enhancement funds, these are, again, state funds for the health department, appropriating those funds to the health department. Budget amendment four B. Um, there were three, uh, vehicles planned and budgeted in FY twenty-three budget, uh, one for planning, one for the health department, one for the tax administration office. Um, we worked very hard, as you know, with, um, limited supply of vehicles, not being able at that time to identify vehicles to purchase that were suitable for those departments. Uh, we believe we have identified those, those vehicles available now, so recommending that you roll forward what was previously appropriated in FY twenty-three in capital outlay, um, to current year's budget. So those are the budget amendments that require your approval, and have to answer any questions about those or any of the other budget amendments, recommend that you prepare.
I just have a comment. Um, I, I just want to thank staff and all staff for, these are the best-prepared budget amendments since I've been a commissioner, and I see detailed, detailed descriptions and very minimal corrections or changes, and so just thank you for taking the time to make sure that those are done correctly, um, and for, it helps us as we review these.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's budget amendment two, one through what?
Uh, budget amendments one through four, sorry, four B.
One through four B is a motion to approve? Questions? All in table, has anyone on the vote, time high?
Aye.
All opposed? There are none of the budget amendments, all through next, who's there?
Next is regarding a resolution to approve plan for Caroline merger transition. Attached for your review is the Caroline merger transition plan, which is due for submission to the North Carolina State Board of Education by November fifteenth. You will see that the plan is in two parts, detailing the respective size of the merger for each school system. A few modifications have been made since our joint meeting on October sixteen. I'll point, uh, direct your attention to those changes and additions in just a second. Uh, all four boards are asked to consider the enclosed resolution to approve the plan and authorize its submission before the deadline on November the fifteenth. Um, Nash County Board of Commissioners met this morning, worded, I got from the managers that they did, um, approve, adopt the resolution to approve the plans as presented. I believe, uh, the school districts are meeting tonight, um, and so we'll hear if this, uh, if they will approve those. I do recommend that you approve the plan as presented, subject to some minor technical cred, technical corrections, uh, that Mr. Peters and I will agree to, if there are any, we believe there will be a couple, um, that if, uh, staff will agree to, and I'll point out a couple of things that might be. Um, I do want to, uh, I want to point out that, uh, in, uh, in your packet was a copy of the, uh, the resolution for approval. Uh, there's been, uh, an update, um, an update to that from the copy that you had in your agenda packet. You do have an updated copy of the resolution at your place. Um, the thing that was added, uh, since the, the agenda packet went out would be, if you look at the one loose at your place, the next to the last, whereas on the front page, uh, states that the board, uh, the boards have identified no remaining issues they believe cannot be resolved by continuing cooperation of the parties. I believe that, that was the, the addition made since the copy went out in your agenda packet. I want to point out a few things, uh, in the plan itself, some of those would be changes from what you saw at the joint meeting, uh, back in October. Some are, were existing at the time, I just want to draw your attention. So, just following through in your agenda packet, of course, first you'll see, uh, is Eschcombe Schools' side of the transition plan. First, I want to point out, if you'll turn to page seven, of Eschcombe Schools' section of the transition plan. You'll see down, uh, second half of the page, it was titled Preparation of Budgets and Funds, Contracts, Obligation, Assets, and Liabilities. Um, those bullet points there on second half of that page outlines, proposed how we in particular, how Eschcombe County will fund or will not fund cer- certain things moving forward, uh, in the transition. Um, I'm happy to, I don't know if I'm going to read through those, but, um, we have discussed those before, you're aware of those, but I want you to know that that they now, this has now been added into the plan itself. It is also, it also shows up on the Nash County, Nash County Schools' side of the plan, is what so be consistent between both sides of, of the plan. Uh, again, just to remind you, I think you, you'll remember, I want to make sure that the public knows, that though there are two sides to this, this will be submitted as one plan under the umbrella of this joint resolution that all four boards are adopting, uh, either earlier today or, or tonight. Um, also on page, on the next page, uh, page eight, at the top of page eight, here are some additional points that have been added. Um, for example, you'll see at the top, it says current expense currently allocated Nash Public, Nash County Public Schools. Of the two million one hundred eighty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-dollar base current expense payment, that's what we, Eschcombe County, we have been budgeting for a number of years now, we refer to that as the current expense, the base payment. Uh, approximately five hundred and fifty thousand of that will be remaining, uh, will be the remaining allocation to Nash County Public Schools to cover those tenth through twelfth graders. As you all remember, just to make sure everyone here in the audience knows, that the transition will happen July of twenty-four, July of next fall. The decision has been made and agreed upon all four, uh, boards, and it is included in this plan, that those rising tenth through twelfth graders, excuse me, who live on the Eschcombe County side of Rockinell, but have been going to a high school in, on the, in Nash County Schools, will be given the option to continue to go to that high school, to finish out their high school career there. And therefore, we having some ongoing current expense obligation for those remaining students at this point, and this is just estimates, you'll be given a, a more definite budget number when it comes to budget time. Estimate is approximately five hundred and fifty thousand of that, um, will remain to be budgeted to Nash County Schools for those students. Therefore, of the two point one eight eight million, approximately one point six million may be available to appropriate to Eschcombe Public Schools. Again, we want to put the word "may" be available, because that's still a budgetary decision that you get to make, uh, come budget time, uh, in next spring. The annual capital and debt service to Nash County Public Schools, approximately four hundred and fifty thousand that year, is or was going to Nash County Schools for annual capital and debt service, may be available to appropriate to Eschcombe Public Schools. We phrase it like that because in this current year, FY twenty-four, um, the budget that you all approved, um, we are paying debt service for, uh, to Nash County Schools, but we're not paying any current, uh, annual capital. So, all of that, the, the total of the annual capital debt service and capital gap, that will be available then to appropriate to Eschcombe Schools instead of Nash Schools. Uh, the plan is, as was on page seven, states that come the fall of next year, we will no longer continue to pay debt service for any annual capital to Nash County Schools. And again, that's something that all four boards are, uh, we expect, are bringing on tonight. Um, the last budget there says, local cost of supplement and benefits for staff positions in the four schools will need to be accounted for, uh, by Eschcombe County. Um, so, uh, those teacher positions, there are about a hundred positions, a little over a hundred positions, um, supplement that is ten percent now in Eschcombe Schools will have to apply to those as well, so we will have to budget for that in upcoming year. But again, we will have available to us those numbers that I just shared with you just a moment ago. Um, also, under, uh, budget transfer process, I want to note there that it says, Eschcombe Public Schools will identify and address all legal and regulatory requirements and frameworks governing transfer of assets and budgets between the school, the two school districts, in accordance with applicable laws, regulations, and contractual obligations. Um, so, uh, that's a broad statement, in particular, that refers to, we've had conversation about assets that will purchase, um, with federal funds, um, and so that is still, uh, final number is unknown, uh, and so this statement is included in both sides of the plan. Um, everyone at this point believes that using, instead of depreciating, depreciated value, instead of using that, using fair market value, that number is going to be much less than what was originally, uh, expected. Uh, they are still, both, uh, staff and both school systems are still working on finalizing that number. Um, and that refers to the next point as well, under transfer, transfer and acquisition of, uh, assets. I do also want to point out, if you turn over a couple pages to page ten, you'll see here on the Esch, on the Eschcombe side of the plan, the recommended school configuration. As we know, the fall of next year, those ninth grade students, uh, that formerly had gone to Nash County Schools, or would have gone to Nash County School, High School, will be coming to Eschcombe School, um, up till the last joint meeting, uh, the two options that were on the table were either to send those students to North Eschcombe High School, or they were considering a building that's called the incubator building in Fountain Park in Rockinell, it's a facility that's becoming available. Um, the, the school board has decided, uh, for the time being, um, to move forward, planning to transfer those ninth graders to North Eschcombe High School. Uh, they looked at just the time of pairing that incubator building, um, just not enough window of time there, and, and, and the board has decided that they, they're planning to move forward, those ninth graders, uh, taking them to North Eschcombe. So that is a revision, uh, in the plan. Of course, there will still be decisions to make as far as, uh, long-term, uh, when those tenth and eleventh and twelfth grade students will transfer over. I also want to point out on page twelve, uh, near the top of page twelve, really the first bullet there at the top of page twelve, uh, there's been some question about bus, the transfer of buses as part of the assets that will transfer, seventy-two passenger versus the sixty-eight passenger buses, I believe, uh, sixty-five passenger buses. Eschcombe Schools Garage cannot handle the longer, larger buses, um, so you'll see here included in the plan is that Eschcombe and the Schools' transportation departments, they're working with DPI to transfer approximately twenty, seventy-two passenger buses from Nash to another local public school unit. Then that local public school unit will then transfer the appropriate number of sixty-five passenger buses to Eschcombe Schools. I also want to point out, I must admit that I was a little confused on this initially. Uh, I, I think initially, there was some thought that the smaller bus meant an older bus, and that's not, not, that's not necessarily the case. They still make both-sized buses, so that does not, though, us, Eschcombe Schools getting those smaller buses doesn't mean, uh, older bus, just means it's a small bus. Um, and so just want to make sure I'm, I made that, uh, made that point. Um, I believe those were all of the additions or changes or things that I wanted to point out, um, in the, uh, Eschcombe Schools' side of the plan. Now, on the, on the Nash side, if you keep on turning, if you turn to page, uh, eleven, I believe their page numbers that follow your last page. Yes, sir. And you'll see Na- Nash School Plan, the one that's in your agenda packet, still has that watermark there of draft, nobody was draft, actually sent me this afternoon, uh, the final copy without that watermark. I do want to point out something that is different from the, what's in your agenda packet, and you have a copy of it at your seat. And, um, they still, uh, here estimate that, uh, under the subheading of fiscal impact, approximately three point four million dollars of, uh, federal, uh, federal funding, local or federal funding, um, will follow those students from Nash County Schools to, to Eschcombe Schools. But, in, in the latest page, and this is what was adopted by Nash County Board of Commissioners, I want you to see this, because this will be a part of the plan. Um, here is where they add the language that you saw over in the Eschcombe Schools' plan that talks about that same statement that reads, ECPS and NCPS are working in collaboration with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, U.S. Department of Education to determine the reasonable fair market value of federally funded assets, and how ECPS will acquire selected assets. Exact same statement that you saw over in the Eschcombe School. So that was not in Nash's topic that you got, that you saw at the October meeting that I sent to you last week, but I want you to know that that has, that has been added. Um, everything else, uh, in the Nash Plan, um, is as you've seen in your agenda packet. I do want to point out, uh, on page eighteen, on page eighteen outlines their timeline for, uh, enrollment and assignment of students. Um, and as you know, those students who live on the Eschcombe County side of Rockinell, but they'll be tenth through twelfth graders, will be given the option to continue going to a high school in Nash County Schools. The timeline here specifies, you'll see April of twenty-four, that they can choose, if they want to, to go ahead and move and transition on, over to Eschcombe School, they don't have to wait, they, they don't want to finish out where they started, they can transition on over. Um, but of course, as you know, they need to know that by a certain time so that they can make plans. So that time is April the first. So the deadline for parents of those students making that decision, um, is April first. If you read the details of the plan, it says information will go out to every student, every household that's affected, giving you more details on the process for that, and, and they will be notified of that, um, a- actually, it'll go out in January, on that page, before you see that goes out in January. But their deadline to make that decision, um, is, is April of twenty-four. Um, they, they'll, they'll be told at that time, it will, I think, will depend on, you know, uh, they, they'll have some options, they'll either early college or North Eschcombe. So, those, uh, those are, are the main changes. Um, it, it was noted that on, on one particular page, um, that there's a correction that needs to be made, uh, where there's a link to a file, a list of the assets that notes, uh, list of, uh, appreciated assets, so that looked to be something that needs to be corrected, instead of using the word appreciation, to use fair market value. So my recommendation would be to, um, to approve the, the plan as presented. Those changes, know that resolution that you have there, and to authorize Mr. Peters and myself to agree to any minor technical corrections that need to be made. Would that be bearable to us?
Any, any questions for our management?
I'm assuming that it says, uh, all these improvements, you just, you question things, you all have a question. In other words, hot, open, shit, if you think about what, if you're, if you're.
But that's right. I mean, the, the plan itself describes the plan for transition students and assets. There are still decisions, uh, you know, to be made on several things. Um, and, and for, for you in particular, there's budgetary decisions that, that are needed.
That's not concerned, should be signed something, we don't really know the dollars, especially the federally funded equipment, you know, it costs like nine hundred thousand dollars, according to this, who's going to decide to pay off market debt? I really like, would like to know. I'd really like to put right to know, if they come up with anything, if we've already signed it. That's why I'm concerned, if we have the language correctly, to make sure that that.
And Mr. Peters, you correct me if we're wrong, but this, you approving this does not obligate you or appropriate any burdens from this, for any of that. Even including for, for those, those federal assets.
You should ask about that subsequent question, right?
Yes, I, I did pass that along.
One other question. In reading the state document, I noticed too many dollars subsized for Nash County, for demerger. I wondered, can you give me an explanation of it, and where did I miss Edgcombe's partner?
It's a good question, somebody pointed that out to me, I can't tell you how they got two million and we didn't.
I know how they got it, I was just wondering why none of our people on that state level questioned, why they got it, why Edgcombe didn't get it. It's gonna cost less money, it's just like it's gonna cost them money, and it's the merger. So it concerned me that our electors in Raleigh didn't see that with the budget plan, or didn't question it.
Well, I, I don't think we have a position to travel with a question on it or not. We were not there, and I believe that they were questioning it, and made attempts to get it for us all. It just happened that the power could get it, and force it out, I guess, I guess, you know, it's them. We had the power to get it from the powers that be, and Raleigh, I think that's really what happened to this. And I think I, I think I represent you, made some strong efforts to get all the money that they could to support this effort, at least to contact and I was handling with them. And sometimes, not necessarily public conversation, they just can't get it. And I believe that, it's probably a question, but there's still some unanswered questions in this, in this document. But I can hear them, yeah. I must say, there is a representative, Senator Chivers' office, a representative, Tom Davis, in terms of seeing if, whatever my, my obligation might have, is she if they can work on some measures from the government to the public, federal public, they can weigh with it. And we gotta be interested in what they have to do, so that we've not heard back from you yet, or you back at it.
Just a couple of things, whenever I don't go to approve something, or give a nay, I always like to give some context without having to say it, so. I, one thing here, and it's kind of what everyone else has said here, is this document, the Nash County side is very vague. If you look at these words, it's, "To determine fiscal availability, we will engage in discussions. We will engage in discussions, we will determine, we will work alongside. In the difference in pay scales, we will determine." We were voting on something, we're approving a document that has not been determined. We have no answer to what is determined. So we're, we're voting on something, and then the things that they're determining, in our school demerger plan for bus coordinators, we are appropriating four bus coordinators for Tarboro, North, South, and Rocky Mountain. So in our demerger plan, or our merger plan, excuse my language, is, we are now organizing bus coordinators throughout the county as opposed to just the merger. And then, in this, this is the first time this has been brought up. We're gonna build a bus storage and maintenance facility, but we don't have the ability to service seventy-two passenger buses. And our document says we're getting sixty-five passenger buses, and Nash County's document, it says we're getting sixty-six passenger buses.
Father, I already did that somewhere.
I, I understand that, but we're voting to approve it, the manager recommended to approve the document that we're saying has errors.
Well, let's start with a real thing, that if we do nothing, we have a merger coming, okay? It's mandated, that's what I'm saying. I think, in this plan, of the, and a majority of, all of this stuff in the plan is school board, is a school board issue, I think it means that we have to do, but once it's mandated, we have to do it. To a level that we can, so it's coming at us anyway, regardless of what it's for. We can do no planning and send nothing back, and we got a merger, it's coming at us next year. So I think, I think, I guess we can call it a living document, in terms of, we really don't know how many students are sending, tenth, that will be, that will be spanned. The school board really can't give us figures until they get the actual number of students that we stand, and that's kind of, those students might decide, or those rising seniors, or just might decide to go to Edgcombe Schools. So I think that's one of the reasons that, that they have to, I mean, the plan is really not to deal with that. I, I think that a lot of what we're talking about is school board issues, in terms of the things that we respect.
I'd like this to reflect back to my question, Mr. Peters, that the language in this is loose enough that any thing that gets disputed, you may take a break.
Yes, sir, I, I, you know, and I think for more context, I don't think the plan was intended to answer every question and allocate every dollar. The plan was put together, in accordance with possession law, which was to be done by the school board in consultation with the county, submitted by November fifteen, and if it's not submitted by November fifteen, the state will come up with a plan. You know, and all these things you've had last year, I think, all four boards and staff have worked together very well, but I think the thing is, to get the best we can do with this plan, knowing that it won't answer every question, and inevitably, more questions will arise in the next year. And it, you know, it does not commit, as you can see on the works of Edgcombe Schools, to, on that fellow, on that, that's unresolved issue that everyone acknowledges is unresolved. And they've made a lot of progress on it, and I hope we'll get some answers, or get some help from the state or government.
I wanted all that resolved before I signed it. That was my problem, because I wanted all that resolved.
I think that was the problem.
By money, how, how are we gonna appropriate money for what we don't think we can afford? I think we appropriate what, unless you go out, unless you appropriate what, unless you go out. The bottom line is, we're gonna, we're gonna have to prosecute for something in the our school system. Bottom line, if we can argue about all this, we want to, be our school system, I think, without church, whether we send any payment, again, July, month, next year, these school systems will be merged.
Page forty-one. Nash County, we, we have.
What the General Senate did, you know, that was out of our hands, in terms of, that was a general standard approach. We had no entitlement to that, that's a political response to politicians that had the power to do that. And I would say that I would, people could've asked for it, we don't know. They did give us some money for different things, they got us to, I believe, what they could.
I've got fourteen million, fourteen-point-two million dollars for Kingsborough, so.
I agree with everything you said, but I would like to answer the question, whatever we just gave you.
But we can't spend money we don't have, and we won't.
But if we don't know that we need to have. I just felt like, a lot of words.
Unless they were given to you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Do we need two million dollars, they will give two million dollars? No, we're gonna find it. We, we are asking, just, we are asking the state, we are asking the state for money now, we're asking Congress for money. Another question, gentlemen? See how it moves to a top of the, the plan?
Sir.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by both sides, aye?
Aye.
Let me know by raising the right hand? All opposed? Most of the past five minutes, next?
Next item on your agenda.
Consider a resolution?
To recognize Native American Heritage Month.
I should read that resolution, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Jim, if you don't mind, I'd like to stand in front of you.
Please, sir. This is, let's see, ever since the negative remark, just to have them, read them, isn't it?
So, it's my honor to stand here at this podium tonight, where a normal sitting, a little bit closer to you. I am a proud member of the Hollis Pony Tribe, we're primarily residing in a little community called Hollis, in North Carolina, southwest corner of Halifax County and Warren County. We are below four thousand members to our tribe. I believe I'm one of only two county managers, Native American county managers in the state, one of your few Native American employees here at Edgcombe County. So, it's my honor to stand here, not only because of that, but also because of the rich history that many people here in Edgcombe County don't realize that we have here in our great county. And so I wanna recognize that tonight by this resolution, and I'll read it as you have it in your packet. Whereas, the Edgcombe County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the rich and diverse history, cultural heritage that has shaped our county. And whereas, North Carolina is home to a significant Native American population, with historical roots that extend back millennia, and it boasts the largest Native American population east of the Mississippi. Whereas, Edgcombe County is steeped in Native American history, and it was once heavily populated by multiple Native American tribes, the prominent, most prominent being the Tuscarora Nation. And whereas, Native Americans have made and continue to make significant contributions to the social, economic, cultural, and political life of our state and nation. And whereas, November has been designated nationally as Native American Heritage Month to recognize and celebrate the rich cultural traditions, contributions, and history of Native American peoples. And whereas, it is essential to promote awareness and understanding of the unique heritage, traditions, and challenges faced by Native Americans throughout our nation and indigenous people all around the world. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Edgcombe County Board of Commissioners officially recognizes the month of November as Native American Heritage Month in Edgcombe County, North Carolina, this sixth day of November twenty-twenty.
Motion.
Same.
Question? All in favor, let me know by both sides, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution is passed.
I do wanna point out, thank you for that so much. I do wanna point out that Reverend Hicks, this that you have at your place, he brought this tonight. He's, he's very knowledgeable in the history of this county, including history of Native people here in the county. So just wanted to recognize him for providing that. Item eight is regarding Edgcombe Community College easement agreement. You see, the city of Rocky Mountain is requesting utility easement property used by Edgcombe Community College at the Rocky Mountain campus. But the closed easement is on a section of the campus that the county owns and leases for the Biotech Training Center. The easement agreement and related maps are attached. I do wanna know that the college has already approved this easement for the portion of the property that they own that this easement will cross. I recommend that you approve the enclosed easement agreement as presented.
Motion. Question? All in favor, let me know by both sides, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? You're in, you're in full, need consideration or approval, hold it back, please, head. You've got it, it's scheduled, it's ever should approve. Second?
Sir.
Question? All in favor, let me know by both sides, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? You're in, this is approved.
Item F, as you know, we have been in discussion with Nash County for some time regarding the sale of Edgcombe County's forty-five percent interest in the former Edgcombe Nash Mental Health Building property, located at five-hundred Nash Medical Arts Mall in Rocky Mountain, Nash County. Nash County owns the remaining fifty-five percent of the property. We have come to a negotiated agreement for the sale of the county's interest in the property, where Nash County is willing to pay two-point-two million dollars for Edgcombe County's forty-five percent interest in the property. The current tax value of the property is four million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, seventy dollars. That's forty-five percent of the current tax value, is two million, one-hundred-seventy-four thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. County attorney Michael Peters and I feel that two-point-two million is a reasonable and appropriate sales price considering the tax value of the property. Our not having a need to own the property and the nature of the county's interest limits its value. For historical context, in nineteen ninety-one, Edgcombe County financed nine-hundred-and-forty-five thousand for its portion of construction of the building on this property. Therefore, I recommend that you approve the sale of our interest in the building located at five-hundred Nash Medical Arts Mall in Rocky Mountain, authorized Chairman Wiggins to execute the D and N related documents.
Motion. Question? All in favor, let me know by both sides, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? You're in, this is approved. Next one?
Next is regarding a request for the naming of the Tar River Bridge. I received a request from Dr. Glundenite on behalf of the Principal Board of Commissioners requesting your support for the naming of the Tar River Bridge between Princeville and Tarboro in honor of the late Mr. Walter Plummer, a copy of the request is included. This request ultimately must be approved by the N C Transportation Board, but they ask for the support of the local governing body. If you would like to support the request, I will then work with Dr. Knight to submit the application. It must be first reviewed by N C DOT staff. If it meets their requirements, I will prepare a resolution for you to consider, which will accompany the application before the Transportation Board. If the board chooses to support this request, I will notify the town in Tarboro, so their board will be aware this request is being submitted.
Motion. Question? All in favor, let me know by both sides, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? You're in, this is approved. Next?
Next is regarding a cell tower lease. As you were made aware at your last meeting, City Switch LLC is proposing to lease property from the county in order to construct and maintain a communications tower. The tower will be located next to the Kingsborough Water Tower. Proposed lease is for hundred-and-fifty dollars per month for an initial term of ten years, with the option to renew for three additional five-year periods. The proposed tower does not meet the setback requirements of our Unified Development Orders. City Switch LLC has applied to appear before our Board of Adjustments to get a variance. I recommend that you approve the lease agreement. The structure of the tower will be subject, subject to the approval of the variance from the Board of Adjustment. I, I do want to acknowledge that, I believe we have representative, representatives here from Edgcombe Martin Electric Membership Corporation, and perhaps a representative of Canban Logistics. They are joining the property owners, and I believe may want to speak on this matters.
Anybody that gets to speak, please come forth, come forth. We have a representative of the tower, of the applicant here. Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity, Winston Howe, CEO of Edgcombe Marketing M C. Wanted the opportunity to speak in opposition of the tower that City Switch has proposed. A little history here, as Eric had already mentioned, it was a proposal last year for them to locate the tower just south of the tracks, next to the Canban facility, and that was denied by the Planning and Adjustments Board because the offsets were not in place to meet the requirements at the time. The new proposed site puts it between the county's water tower and our electric substation, which, as you can imagine, is a critical piece of infrastructure that we serve, use to serve around a thousand of our members in Edgcombe County. We serve approximately twelve thousand, twelve thousand members across Edgcombe Martin's system. The location that is proposed for the new tower, we'll put it within a hundred foot of major distribution lines coming out of our station. We serve several key accounts out of that station. If you remember, we served the Q B C facility out of there. We now serve R Q N Investments out of there, and several others that are looking to locate. Further importance is all the attention that we continue to get from requests here in the county, projects looking at the mega site, one of the top mega sites in the state, not the country. And there could be future expansion needs for that station. So we have great concerns, safety and reliability are key to what we do, and we certainly wanna make sure that we protect the interest of our members and that station. It's about a twelve-million-dollar investment we have there, and we wanna make sure that we can continue to provide safe and reliable power to our members. We understand that City Switch has stated this tower was engineered to fall within its footprint if something were to happen. We understand that and appreciate that, but in our line of work, we engineer and design a lot of things in our system, but they don't always work as they're engineered, and that's just how things happen sometimes. We also understand the catastrophic type of weather events that we experience here in our county. We're very familiar with the tornadoes that we experienced here just a few months ago, the damage hit halls. So, again, we have some, some. So again, we have some, some very great concerns about locating almost a three hundred foot tower that close to our substation and the risk that it can impose on our members and our infrastructure. And I certainly hope you will take that into consideration in approving a lease agreement when it doesn't even meet the setback requirements that the commission has already put in place.
Any question?
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else speak? Anybody else speak? And I?
I mean, I perceive the call about this, because it's on the side myself, how urgent is this?
Well, for us, it's not urgent to that company, but they will probably say that it is, but some.
I'm just, I've got some questions about, not, not, not particularly about this gentleman, but anybody coming up and where the location is and the relationship there to give. I mean, for all of my, in the vast, like, kids, or, I mean, we're going to do anything for, end anybody or anybody in the future to receive some actual information on the fact that what has to be done or what should be done, whether this, this is a good place to put it. Do we have any other name? I don't think we want that place.
Well, now that Mr. Peters follow up, he's had more direct conversation with them. But I think based on the area that they're trying to serve, they have a fairly tight window of where they want to locate this tower. Because we did, you know, we presented that to them.
As Mr. Edison, do you apparently have a tight, that they advise us that they get a request, City Switch gets a request from a provider. And that provider gives them, we want a tower in this particular radius. Mr. Howes said their original application last year was south of the railroad. It was within the CSX provider, which was in that southwest corner of the intersection, directly south of this proposed location. When that, when they get that variance, they came back to the county interested in this location. They also proposed a location on the northeast side of that intersection further down, which is the longer railroad right of way of what we call the Virginia Long Tribe, that lot across from Q B C. That was the location they looked at. That location would be within the right of way, but not near the real visibility of the passage of construction development. We proposed further east, about a mile from the intersection with K River, River Track, to where there's a current units from T V Tower and the county has a lot that's worth the land lock. They told us that that location is too far away from their target area. We had our conversations recently with EMC, we proposed some of the land directly behind the, you know, Q B C property. And were told the same thing, that that was too far away. So apparently the radius and target area they're looking at is very narrow. So that's what they, we, we, you know, from our perspective, both locations. But they kept coming back to this very tight window at the intersection.
Is it all in there, right?
Yes, it's in there. So all three, we have a water tower beside it. That should be a concern about a tower, tower falling on our water tower. EMC has expressed that supply at that station right now supplies a thousand people. We have concern about it falling on there and taking power out for a thousand people. Plus the expansion need with having to go over four hundred megawatts for some of these projects that we're looking at. They're obviously going to have to expand that, that substation. So that's the natural area that they're having to expand anyway. And the other property, under private property, under Canban, has expressed concern about the tower being beside. So everyone around them has expressed concern.
May I ask you a question? May I ask Mr. Tolson and Mr. Pott? You know, we rely on you guys quite a bit. Simple question here, do, do we want a, a, a tower placed in a place that we're trying to develop big? Hey, Adam, let me put you out on the spot.
Yeah, what's wrong?
By the way, I had to introduce Shroud Dawson to my staff today. They kept saying, we don't have anybody named Dawson on the floor.
You know, so hey, I didn't know about this tower until today. But all the arguments against this tower I've heard tonight, I completely support. We are going to have to expand the, the electric capacity that people. And if it impinges on the current site that, that once they're describing, you then I strongly oppose this, this tower. And a three hundred foot tower out there, where I think you talked about putting that tower, it may not be very acceptable to our class base either. So unfortunately, I understand that these people may need a tower. But we don't want to also mess up a twenty-two hundred megamegawatt.
And to, to that point, Mr. Chairman, if I could say, first of all, I think, I think this discussion is important because you all have very difficult decisions to make. You need to be as well informed as you can. Sometimes these decisions are not clear cut. The recommendation I'm bringing to you, and I believe Mr. Peters and I agree in this recommendation. It's not easy for us, we have to balance out all of these things. Part of the reason that we're making this recommendation is Mr. Peters mentioned. If you imagine if you're standing facing north, railroad track in front of you, Canban to your left, water tower here just in front of you diagonally, and then this land here over to your right, that's the long track, very valuable track. This, the, this particular company, right now, other than what they originally tried to present, which was not approved, they're interested in either what we're proposing tonight or just east of Kingsborough Road, along the right of way of the railroad, and that just, it will be south of that long track. Our concern was, we want to try to steer it away from that because, as Mr. Peters mentioned, they were considering something in the right of way, not land that we own. So as far as they would need, no lease agreement for us. They would still have to go back to the Board of Adjustments for that variance. But there's a possibility that the Board of Adjustments may want to approve that. We absolutely do not want a tower north of the railroad track and east of Kingsborough Road because at some point, Norris, Bob, and Ikey may bring a project in and that project say, I need a rail spur off CSX Railroad. And that tower is in the way. It makes sense to me that if you're gonna, if, if there's a possibility, a tower is going to be erected within that vicinity, to put it within the footprint of other utilities. And I totally understand concern that falling. We have to rely on recommendation information given to us by engineers. We do that all the time in other projects. And so I do also to the point that Edgecombe Martin would not have room to expand. If you're looking at your, the, the map in your agenda packet, where you see the, the proposed site, you'll see in the, the blue area, that's property that the county owns. To the right of that, that round circle, that's the tower. To the left of that, that square box there, that's the property that EMC's substation is on. You can see behind that, that's land, it's, it's covered in trees right now. That's land that the county owns. They, they could potentially expand in that direction. So I say, I put all of this on the table to weigh because, you know, I, I'm not making this recommendation just because this company came and asked for it. We've thought through all of these things. Certainly, I just want to clarify that position, my recommendation to you. Certainly, I understand it's not an easy decision to make and, and have to support. We will support whatever decision you make.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I, I, this is the first I've heard of this. What's the urgency on the cell tower?
Well, this company wants to build it and they, they want to build it as soon as they can.
And what, what, why do, why they, if they just, is there a demand for the services this tower is going to provide?
Well, I guess we depend on, if we do others, evidently, their market research has determined that. And I think we do need cell towers, additional towers in the area for reception in our area. So, uh, uh, you know, we look at, I look at staff recommendations when they come. Is that they have been in that service, like I do for you? When you bring recommendations to the board, and we depend on what you say, okay? So my motion is to approve.
Can I make a comment? So, so now we've had our economic developer.
Excuse me, excuse me just a minute. My voice is very full, like I said, go ahead, go ahead.
Without a comment from our economic developer, that he, he either wants to see more about it or he's to, could die outright. And he's not been involved in the conversation. So we talked about the expansion of the next site, we didn't involve our economic developer.
He's not usually involved in what comes to you, you know, commissioner not involved. And he come, he's not usually involved in commission decisions except for his economic development. He was invited. Now, I'm not saying, you know, my, my motion to approve failed, so that's, that's gone, okay? So it's up to the board in terms of what they want to do. Does he have a motion to come forward?
I would motion that we do not approve this.
As motion to not approve, and as a second. All, all in favor, let me know by the votes.
Aye.
All opposed? While, while the session goes fast. Next.
Uh, next is item attachment thirteen, item I regarding amendment to cooperative agreement between Northland Department of Public Safety. For time's sake, basically what, what's happening here is, you know, we have received money in the past, federal funds that run through the State Department of Public Construction for a federal buyout program letting properties eligible to be purchased. Once those properties are purchased and cleared, then the county takes ownership of that vacant lot and we have to maintain it as open space. We did that after Floyd, Matthew. And so now the State Department of, uh, now the Office of Recovery and Resiliency has another buyout program, federal funds, but funded through another stream of federal funds. And they directly are administering buyout life program and calling them buyout zones. So they've identified some areas in the county, part of town Princeville, some outside of town Pine Tops, a couple of smaller areas where people are eligible. It's a voluntary program, they can participate. What the state is asking us to do tonight is to amend the original cooperative agreement that we have with the state where we will then agree that any of those properties that they purchase, we will take ownership if it's in, in the unincorporated areas and maintain them as open space. And so that's, that's the amendment to the cooperative agreement. And you'll see there's list, there's a listing of all of the properties that are eligible that are within those buyouts. They might not all get bought out, they likely will all be bought out. But this will be an amendment to that agreement where we will accept those, those properties. The second part of this is that resolution to accept strategic buyout program properties. And what this will do is by this, by this resolution, it will authorize me to then accept each of those properties as they are bought out, if they are bought out. So there, there will be deeds that will be signed, transferred to the county. So that will authorize me to accept those properties that are bought out. So first recommendation is to approve the First Amendment to Cooperative Agreement with the Northland Department of Public Safety.
Make that, make that possible.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes.
Aye.
All opposed? Here in the, the.
Second part of that is to approve the resolution to accept strategic buyout program properties.
Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes. All opposed? Here in the, the. Next.
Uh, next is regarding our compensation plan. As we continue to review our new compensation plan, we've identified additional corrections and additions to be made. Attached is a summary of those changes which, which present no additional appropriation needed to the budget. I recommend that you approve the updated compensation plan ordinance as, as presented.
Question. All in favor, let me know by the votes.
Aye.
All opposed? Here in the, the. Next.
Item K is regarding our public records policy update. Basically, in the policy that you all approved back in twenty nineteen, it specifically says that a, a public records request must be submitted on a form that we provide as part of our new, relatively new policy. What happens is sometimes you'll have an entity that may say email Mr. Peters or Ms. Lewis requesting of information as publicly available. But because our policy says that it has to be, that request has to be on that form, then they have to send it to them to take all of the information and put it on this form. And that's a duplicated effort, it's not necessary. As long as they have the information that we need and require for that public records request, we feel to be fine to not have to use that policy, not have to use that form. And so you'll see that, that in the recommended change to the policy, you'll see on pages nine and ten, it removes a requirement that the request be on our form. Also on page eleven, additional information is provided to specify the fee we charge for processing extraordinarily large requests. On page fourteen, a formatting issue is corrected. I recommend that you approve as presented and want to acknowledge Mr. Rosa Lewis for, for her going through the document and making those recommendations.
Motion. Second question. All in favor, let me know by the votes.
Aye.
All opposed? Here in the, the.
Uh, next is regarding a schedule of values for the twenty twenty-four revaluation. As you know, at your last meeting, you held a, a public hearing and, and presented was a schedule of values to be used for twenty twenty-four revaluation. What we need tonight is two separate actions. Recommend first that you take action to approve the market value as presented at the October meeting. The second motion then will be to, to approve the present use value that was as previously presented. First motion would be to approve the market value schedule as presented.
Motion. Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes.
Aye.
All opposed? Here in the, the.
The second motion will be to approve the schedule of values for present use value as presented.
Next, your motion.
My motion.
Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes.
Aye.
All opposed? Here in the, the. Next.
Uh, item, item M is regarding the, the, two sheriff's staff are retiring soon. As you know, state statute allows the board to award retiring officer his or her service weapon. It specifically states that she may do so at a price determined by you as the governing body. Sheriff Atkinson has requested consideration be given for retiring Captain Charles West and Sergeant David Parker. To show the county's appreciation for their exemplary service and to provide a memento to that service, I recommend that you approve the transfer of their service weapons at a price of one dollar upon retirement of Captain Charles West and Sergeant David Parker.
Second. Question. All in favor, let me know by the votes.
Aye.
All opposed? Here in the, the.
Just making sure they mark it.
No, they're not.
Uh, item N is your holiday schedule for twenty twenty-four that does follow our personal policy.
Motion approved. All opposed? Here in the, the.
Next is regarding a grant that park extensions will receive from N C State. We've received notice, N C State is, through the Ag, Ag, Ag Ventures Program, is approving four thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the purchase of an enclosed trailer. This does require a fifteen percent match, but that will be covered by funds already appropriated, that corporate extension already has, so no additional appropriation is needed. I recommend that you approve the project ordinance as presented.
Motion.
Motion.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes.
Aye.
All opposed? Here in the, the. Um, next is appointments. We have, um, on this, through our park and recreation advisory board, there is this Sheila Cook, what is it, Anderson, Regina Morrison, Sue Haller. There is Miss Sheila Hook, one is Anderson, Regina Mosley, Sue Howard, Lauren Dickens, Curtis Knight. Are these are real appointments?
These are real appointments.
These are real appointments? Is there a motion to real?
Okay.
Questions? All in favor, that we know my motion is aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is. I saw no jury commission.
Uh, you have Mr. Ruben Thompson the fourth is eligible for.
Let me see that again, okay. Who is, what is this guy?
Uh, Mr. Ruben Thompson the fourth, and he's eligible for real appointment.
Is there a motion? Question? All in favor, that we know my motion is aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is, approved. Out the list and releases for review on approvals, everything that we brought to our attention.
No, sir. Happy to answer some questions.
Is there a motion to approve?
My motion.
Is that, questions? All in favor, that we know my motion is aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is, approved. Uh, contracts for review on approval, anything you brought to the board's attention, Mr. Stevens?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I do need you to take separate action on a couple of these tonight. First, you have a change order to existing contract with EnviroCon. Uh, this will be to, uh, add, um, and this company provides security key fob access in our building. This will be add, to add access and security controls at our emergency operations center. Uh, no additional budget appropriation is needed, but we recommend that you separately approve, um, that change order.
Is there a motion? Second, questions? All in favor, that we know my motion is aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is, approved. Now, hold on.
Is that our last building, like county administration building to do that?
Uh, we have other buildings that still need fob access.
Yeah, part of this, we, we look at that on all our EMS stations as well. Problem is you got to have county air map available for all of that work. So we have to get that there first before we can.
Any more contracts?
Uh, yes, sir. The second.
Did he get above?
No.
Yeah.
Uh, the second one is, um, prime corrections. Uh, this is a not to exceed, a contract not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars and note that this is paid through savings found in medical billing for jail health services. Um, this company, the services, cost containment services for medical services at the detention center. Um, Captain Oliver Washington, who's, uh, sheriff's, uh, jail administrator is here tonight. Uh, he may be able to share a little bit more about, uh, this company and, um, what they provide. Um, I do, if you do, uh, approve this, I recommend part of the approval be as a sole source vendor.
Uh, motion to approve it as a sole source vendor. I hear that you talk, uh, did you approve it? You want to comment?
Oh, y'all want to prove?
Sometimes you talk yourself out of it.
Exactly.
All in favor, that we know my motion is aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is, approved. Sometimes people do talk themselves out of it.
And then the last one is with a getting in.
I mean.
Uh, this is a company that provides GIS addressing software. This also is a request for sole source contract. This then provides an addressing solution that is the most compatible with our GIS system, which is why we recommend this sole source, three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Motion? Questions? All in favor, that we know my motion is aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is, approved. Um, this all contracts?
This all contracts, yes, sir.
Uh, departmental reports, uh, warrant suit, you gotta get the report. Month to find, just probably any questions to the man. Here it is, this is the management's book, please.
Um, you have major events, updates, workforce development, TBA, financial report. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, I do want to give some attention to item D, update on tornado storm debris cleanup. All of the vegetative and C and D debris that was placed along the right of way, all of that related, directly related to the July tornado. All of that has been picked up, taken to the landfill. And as of just last couple of days, all of that vegetative debris that was taken to the landfill has been grinded up. So that's, that's part of the process. Still waiting on final invoices from, uh, from the company. And, and once we get that, I'll, I'll come back and share with you the, the tonnage that, that we received on, on that. As you know, the next step to that is, um, we've been told we're going to receive some funds from the state for, um, for demolition, clearing, uh, properties that's not on the right of way. There were some properties that were destroyed or significantly destroyed that can't be brought to the right of way. We expect to receive some funding from, uh, General Assembly Appropriation in what we've been told amount of three hundred thousand dollars, uh, that we will have this contract and then go on site for those that were directly affected to demolish and clear, uh, clear that, that which is remaining. So, uh, waiting to hear on that. Uh, one of these is a business related to that tornado, uh, on, on the day that reached out to Chairman Wiggins, and as he has the authority to do, he declared a state of emergency. We've never ended that state of emergency. We're okay to end that now. So I do recommend that the board, uh, take, uh, action tonight to end the state of emergency, uh, related to the July tornado.
Let me ask one question before we, uh, try to, to be sure that all of the agreement is there. Be comfortable with that.
Uh, all of the degree that has been brought to the right of way, what directly to this?
Every, uh, what is the end date for that? The end date for the contract to pick it up, the degree, that you say it's ending?
That's done for anything that was brought to the right of way, that, that's, yes, sir.
I guess what I'm getting at is, do we need, do we need a date for the public to know that we are ending that?
We let the people who are affected know direct.
Okay, that's right.
Since it was so targeted and we knew all of those addresses, we let them know direct.
Okay. Or is there a motion to end the state of emergency?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to end the state of emergency? Questions? All in favor, that we know my motion is aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is, state of emergency now, here.
Mr. Williams, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, as I say, on October third, first, you met with, uh, sheriff and town manager, Talbor, in regards to the animal shelter. Still, uh, let, let, hold, let me, let me go back. Uh, did Mr. Lewis offer any, uh, words of, uh, dollar figures to you in regards to support for that?
No, sir. He, he, he did express that the town is still interested in participating, still defining what that might look like. Uh, he's going to go back. Um, I shared with him, our estimate right now for where we are is, uh, four million dollars, uh, seven hundred seventy-five thousand that we already have in hand from last year's state appropriation we can use for that. I mentioned to you before recommending that we use a million dollars of proceeds from selling this building to go towards that and the balance of that to borrow from USDA World Development's Community Facilities Program. That's probably likely the best terms that we can get. So shared all of that with them, with Mr. Lewis. He's going to go back and discuss with this board.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, next step for us though is, um, for, uh, for Mr. Matthews and Stan, our, uh, main director, and Chief Deputy Williams and other staff members, who was a whole committee that was involved. Uh, they just recently made a few more last tweaks to the plan, the building plan. And so now we're going to have the architect to draw up the bid documents so that we can go ahead and bid that out. Our goal is try to bid that out before the end of December so we can get some hard, fast bid numbers. We will have to have that anyway for USDA if we, if we go to them for that. So that, that'll be the next step in the animal shelter.
I, I heard some very excited citizens about the plans that were there. It seemed they were encouraged and been involved the entire time.
And we've been keeping the, uh, our Animal Welfare Advisory Council updated on where we are at as well.
Question. Should Talbor, uh, vote not to financially engage? Do they take their animals, do they own animals?
At their current shift, yes, sir. I, I would suspect. Um, last thing on the management's report, I don't have it listed, but I do want to point out, as mentioned earlier, you have a copy of a letter at your place. We were recently notified that East Point, uh, Trillium and Sand Hills, uh, Managed Care Organization, or MCO, areas are going to merge. It looks like that this is a word from the, um, Secretary of Department of Health and Human Services, um, that their, uh, plan is to consolidate those, those three areas. There's still, you know, some, some work to be done. As different, as you know, that's different from what we had heard before. What we had last heard, there was a plan, uh, for East Point to merge with Sand Hills region. Uh, now that, that will now include, uh, Trillium. Uh, been told the expectation is that, uh, uh, E- East Point is going to be the lead entity in, in, in that. Uh, but, you know, there, there's, there's a lot to be done. I guess we just, we'll, we'll wait and see how that, how that, how that pans out. So that, that's all I have, okay?
Anything else, Mr. Stevens?
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, just wanted to thank this boy is for a resolution on behalf of, I'm living a life. It's been, you know, we lost her on October thirty, age one hundred and four. So we can give her plenty of time with her. And, um, just a year ago, in this chamber, um, she was honored as one of the officers in HCMR along with two other ladies over on HCMR. So, and so we appreciate whatever time and all of your thoughts and prayers, um, for us. Uh, who's the youngest child had utilized her. We legitured her on Saturday, which was her official birth that we found out in Hallabasie County. We had to celebrate in October, but finally got a copy of her certificate that says, one hundred and fourth, nineteen ninety. But anyway, I mean, four years, well, and so thank you for the consideration and for being there. Really surprised me.
Anything else, Mr. Stevens?
Just one comment. Um, medical grades came out today for, um, hospitals throughout the state. I'm glad we're seeing aid for patient safety, which is a great success. Um, we're very lucky to have that facility here in HCMR. They do a lot of great work with those, just a little recognition.
Mr. Stevens, you're on, you had his first job. Congratulations.
I mean, happy, happy, happy boy and mom.
Uh, Roman, Roman, I see you like that. Uh, are there any other, any other comments up there? Here it is, none? Mr. Peters? Okay, it's time, ladies and gentlemen, we normally go into closed session. Uh, we go into closed session, discussing economic development matter. Is there a motion to go ahead? Table, that's your new, question? All in favor, that we know my motion is aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much for coming. Stayed here for a long session. Staff couldn't move you.